A couple of announcements, first, again, about the fire exits. So the folks in this front-left section, if there is an emergency, you will go out these front doors and then go to your right. The people in this front section shall go out this front door and go out to your left. The people in that back corner shall go out that back door, go to your left. The people in that back-right section shall go out that back door and out the main entrance of the high school. We have, should you need any hearing assistive devices, we have teller, they're in front, so where the projection is, there's Kevin waving his hand. If you need any of those devices, just come right to that section or inform a teller, one of the counters, and they shall help you with those. And I remind you of the general rules. I'm not going to go into all of the general rules again for procedure, they're located in the back of the warrant. Kindly be brief, kindly be civil, be kind. If you have any questions about procedures, if you'd like to do something and you don't know how to do it, just ask, and I'll provide the answers. When we come to a vote, I will ask for you to raise your blue voting cards. So if you have a yellow one from last night, it's no good. The blue ones are the ones that I'm going to be looking for. So please keep them raised until I say "thank you." And if there's any hand counts, there are tellers there to assist, and they will be And I kindly ask the media to go into the visitors' section. Thank you. Now, at the recognitions ceremony last night, there was a group of people who was not recognized inadvertently, and I invite Mr. Crane up to correct the matter.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Last night, we did the recognition list. I won't go through it all again, but we did leave a committee that was in place for a defined period of time, but did an exceptional amount of work, and that was the School Building Committee. There were many members, there was some turnover on the committee. Their names are on a plaque outside in the hallway, so as you're leaving, you can see the many members of the School Building Committee. I happened to work with them when I first arrived here, and co-chair Bobby Barkit is over there. But I just wanted to, they certainly deserve recognition for the outstanding effort they put into helping develop the building in which we now sit. So I want to recognize the School Building Committee.
Then we'll get right down to business. I'll start with Article 30. Ms. Angelides.
I move in terms of the article.
Is there a second? Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it, Ms. Angelides.
The town received $850,000 as a mitigation payment from MGM Resort Internationals, Inc. The funds were awarded as part of the surrounding community agreement with MGM to address traffic and roadway infrastructure impacts. $94,200 has been sent on the design work for the intersection of Long Meadow Street and Converse Street. $755,800 remains in the fund. During the closing process of the FY 2016 Town Records, the Department of Revenue put the town on notice that it would close these funds into the town's general surplus unless Town Meeting voted to designate the use of the funds otherwise. The approval of this article will maintain the original purpose for which the funds were awarded.
Any other board recommendation or floor discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. This motion requires a simple majority. Would all those in favor of the motion under Article 30, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed to the motion under Article 30, please raise your blue cards? The motion passes by majority affirmative vote. I noticed there are several people who are trying to come in, and I want to make sure that all who want to come in are ready before we move to the next article. Are we all set, Officer? There's still people checking in. Then if we're, if we're ready to begin, we're ready to begin, but if... Yep. Ms. Angelides, Article 31.
I move in terms of the article.
Is there a second? The motion has been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
The effort to plan for a new adult center, which has been ongoing for more than three years, was significantly advanced by the Adult Center Building Committee in 2016 through a detailed site selection. After receiving feedback from Town Meeting, the Select Board chose Greenwood Park as the preferred site for the adult center. This appropriation will continue the planning and design effort. Since placing the article on the warrant, the Select Board advanced the project in two ways. At our last meeting, the Select Board gave a directive to the Town Manager that the adult center not be a building that combines the adult center with parks and recreation departments. The facility should be predominantly and primarily serviced the senior community. The Select Board also established a goal of a zero-energy building. The design money will be used for an energy-efficient adult center at Greenwood Park to service the needs of the senior community, not only for today, but in the future. Residents have expressed concerns about any future building projects because of the current tax rate in Long Meadow. I would like to speak to this issue. The Select Board has been working on addressing the need to bring down our tax rate. We are working to decrease our operating budget by creating a plan to manage our pension and health insurance costs. We did not go up to the full 2.5 percent this year, and we're committed to continuing this trend for the next few years. We have a goal of decreasing the percentage of the budget paid by property tax, and we have a goal of increasing the tax base. Through careful planning in all phases of the town's finances, Long Meadow can make the needed investments in our future while minimizing the impact to our taxpayers today. Thank you.
Finance Committee recommendation? Mr. Garrett?
If you look in your warrant, you'll see that the recommendation list is not recommended by the Finance Committee, and I'm going to speak to that. When the Finance Committee first considered this article, all the feedback that we received reflected a universal revulsion with the master plan that was presented to the senior community. And the Finance Committee concluded that it would be imprudent to devote this amount of funds to a project which the seniors of the community did not support. However, since the Finance Committee took our original vote, the facts and circumstances have changed dramatically. What has happened since that time is through the cooperation with the Select Board and the Town Manager and the seniors in the community, they have had multiple meetings to discuss the overall plan and the goals and purposes of the project, including the desires and needs of the senior community. And as you heard Ms. Angelides speak to, the project has been changed, the overall plan has been changed, and the senior community, the feedback that we've received is that the seniors in our community are now in support of this new plan as laid out by Ms. Angelides. Based on that information, the Finance Committee determined that it was proper to reconsider our recommendation. We discussed it, voted again, and voted to recommend this article because now the funds will be allocated towards a project that we believe that the senior community is in support of. I would also add that the senior center project, as expressed by the Town Manager last night, is part of a joint resolution by the School Committee as well as the Select Board to have our three main projects, our three major projects, the school, the senior center, and the DPW placed in an order as part of an overall plan to move these projects along in a manner that's going to have the, as small of an impact on the finances of the town as possible. So based on all these factors, the Finance Committee does recommend Article 31.
Thank you. I now invite Mary Beth Bergeron, the Chair of the Building Committee, Senior Center Building Committee.
My name is Mary Beth Bergeron. I live at 497 Inverness Lane. I've been in town for 40 years. I know I don't look that old. I address you today as the Chairman of the Adult Center Building Committee. Thank you, Madam Moderator, Town Manager, Select Board, Finance Committee, all of the Council on Aging Board, Faloka, neighbors, residents, and town departments that have helped our committee arrive at the vote here tonight. I want to particularly thank the committee, who worked so many hours on this project. The committee is made up of a wide variety of residents, young and old, some in the construction business, some with management skills, some strong advocates of older residents in this town, and a few simply advocates of this social justice need within our community. Frankly, I never counted the number of meetings or subcommittee meetings we held, nor the time we met with various departments and committees within the town community. We investigated every available parcel in town that might be suitable for a new adult center. It was my honor to work with them, and I remain impressed with their dedication to this adult center project. I also want to thank other residents and neighbors who attended many of our meetings, provided feedback, comments, and suggested, suggestions that assisted us in our deliberations. Tonight, we have no statistical charts, no professional photographs, no intricate building plans to show you, or a plethora of statistics that will make you glaze over. I will not list for you the deficiencies in our existing building, nor what the needs and wants are. We have already done that. What we do have is a project for the entire community that we, as a community, must get off the ground. I am here tonight as one citizen to speak to other citizens about this true need in our community. Interestingly, this project was started as a citizen's petition by Jerry Nollet and Roger Wojcik a number of years ago. This project was started by citizens, has been driven by citizens, and is for the citizens. We have a wonderful quality of life here in Long Meadow. We have beautiful parkland, wonderful schools, playing fields for sports, and really, really great schools. However, we are about to experience a tsunami. It is a silver tsunami. Not just in Long Meadow, but across the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts and our country, our population is aging. Forty-five percent of the entire workforce in this country is about to retire. So if you're young out there, you're going to have a lot of job opportunities. According to, in Long Meadow, according to the most recent Long Meadow Town Report, we have 15,215 residents. That number, the total population, has not changed much in the last few decades. What has changed, however, and will be changing even more, are the demographics of our town. Today, we have 4,666 individuals that are over the age of 60. That represents 30 percent of our population. As importantly, we have an additional 2,577 residents between the age of 50 and 59. The wave is approaching us, and we need to address it. The current senior center at Greenwood is inadequate to meet the current and growing needs of this population. In fact, the senior center is not just for older residents, but it is also for you who are taken care of, parents, grandparents, aunts or uncles. It is also for the veterans who need assistance with obtaining benefits, and those needing food, the food bank, or taking advantage of the federal Meals on Wheels program. The center services a wide range of people within our community. I believe that at the October Town Meeting, you, the residents, recognized we need to do something. However, you also strongly indicated that you wanted the new facility at Greenwood. We listened and we heard you. It became very apparent that you would support a new senior center at Greenwood Park, and we have acted on your words. We always said that construction on that parcel would be a challenge. It appears it remains so. It is not impossible, but certainly a challenge, since the site already accommodates a daycare, after-school program, summer camp, two ball fields, the in-ground pool, and the tennis courts, and an additional small playground. Our committee has come up with some ideas that would work, however, we believe would work. However, we need the services of a building architect and landscape designer. We believe that a standalone building designed specifically for older residents would be affordable and would provide the much-needed programs and services that the town needs today, as well as for tomorrow. We recognize that the town is facing three major building projects in this decade: the new DPW, a new senior center, and a new middle school. We know that a new senior center must be affordable to the town. We believe that a standalone senior center will cost the town approximately $8 million, basically about $80 a year for every taxpayer. It is affordable, and it is doable. The trend in our country is for people to age in place or in multi-generational homes. This is true in our town as well. This trend in our town allows our schools to provide a higher level of service and education even though our tax base is small. The older residents of this town pay their taxes, but we actually use the least amount of services. We have no children in the school system. We generate the least amount of trash. The list kind of goes on and on. I'm going to use myself as an example.
Excuse me, Ms. Bergeron. You're at 7:39.
I guess I'll skip that. I believe it is in the best interest of the town, as well as our older residents, to keep them living here, aging gracefully, in place, and enjoying a good quality of life as long as they can. I will also mention that from a financial perspective, the senior center project is unique in that we would qualify possibly for grant funds from the community development funds for the state, and we are also able to raise money to help build the building. I believe it is a privilege and a gift to grow old. Let us not leave our senior citizens behind. I ask you to vote yes on Article 31. Thank you.
We have a school board recommendation? School Committee?
Hello, Russell Dupere, Vice Chair of the School Committee. I actually just wanted to clarify a point, that we did vote that all three projects were important, but we did not vote on the priority or the order. So that's something I just wanted to make clear to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Somebody, the yellow microphone?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Michael Henderson, 42, Williston Drive. Madam Moderator, I am not questioning the need for a senior center or the good faith of any of the people who looked into it. What I am questioning is, how many studies has this town done, and at what cost, for the senior center, for the middle schools, for the DPW building site, and where we have sought any synergies in terms of an overall town plan and town study, including other areas that require improvement in this town? It seems to me that we just...
So let me just make sure I've got that straight. You asked, "How many studies for various different types of buildings and other infrastructure needs have we done?" Is that...
Correct.
Your first question? Do you have another question?
Well, so, because we just saw another study here for $94,200 that had been spent previously, it seems to me, as a professional engineer, I might be missing out on a number of these studies, and I'd like to learn more about...
All right.
...how I can be part of this. Thank you.
All right. Is there someone who can answer that? Mr. Crane?
Subtle pitch, well done. There have been, since the time, I can speak to the time that I've been here, since 2013, if that's far back enough. So there have been a fair number of studies that we have done on a variety of projects, and almost too numerous to list here. But in terms of your point of an overall plan, we did start the process of updating our long-range plan, which was done in 2004. Last year, we did an online survey about, that asks very specific questions about attitudes towards zoning, use of open space, you know, types of services that people could stand to be reduced if we were in financial distress, things like that. We got over 800 responses, and it was good feedback. In fact, we just had a planning student come and kind of write a narrative of all that, and we'll be presenting that to the Select Board, to the public in the near future. But I will tell you that, from a planning standpoint, a land-use planning standpoint, there isn't a lot to talk about in Long Meadow, because as we mentioned last night, Long Meadow was largely built out. And the feedback that we have, that, I'll speak for myself, the feedback that I have received as Town Manager and Town Planner, through the public processes we've had for citing the DPW and the adult center, has really opened my eyes towards community feelings about their open spaces, their neighborhoods, and how we should use land. And I'll be honest, some of the feedback we got, which was broad-based, was in conflict with some of the results of the survey. And so I think it, what I'm doing now is trying to match up the conceptual with the actual, in terms of the feedback. The other thing is, the joint resolution was mentioned. There are those three projects out there, we are thinking about all of them, they are, and I said this last night, they are all very, very different stages of need, development, they are funded differently in some cases. When we get, when the middle school project advances is really up to the state, not the town. And so there's, to try and link them all together, you'd be really harming all of them in some ways. In terms of the study you referenced, we've done engineering studies of our intersections, our roadways, traffic counts galore through the casino process and others. And when you think of what's a overall master plan, and I will end it here, Madam Moderator, a master plan is simply a composite of a bunch of smaller plans. And that's what we've been doing. We've been doing a lot of smaller plans to develop those components to build a larger plan, and we are doing that. It takes a while. It takes time, and you want to do it right versus having a plan that is right now.
Thank you.
Madam Moderator, if I may, with a follow-up.
No, sir. Excuse me. I understand that, but you asked your questions. We have two other people who are up to speak. We will get back to you. You'll be the third one to speak again.
Madam Moderator, excuse me, please, but I did ask for dollar amounts, and I did not hear from our finance people as far as amount that we have spent on studies.
I don't recall you asking about that, I'm sorry.
I would like dollar amounts, please, including what we spent last year for the Bliss Park Senior Center, which obviously is a no-go.
Very briefly, the Bliss Park was a volunteer effort. We have spent, I want to say, maybe $85,000 combined through two, a series of two warrant articles. I think we've actually spent less than that, we've been appropriating $85 for the senior center. The DPW we voted on last night, that's been a few hundred thousand dollars. I mean, it's, if the number, the number is certainly into six figures if you take all the plans we've done, but I don't know how else we answer questions people have. You have to do the studies to answer the questions. Can it fit there? What will the impact be? What does traffic, I mean, how do we answer, I mean, if we don't want to spend the money on studies, I'm happy to make answers up, but that's what you're going to get. And that's why we do the studies. And they are, some are expensive, some are less expensive. We did a study, we got appropriation last year to do the stormwater utility you're going to hear about. We don't have the personnel and the expertise in the town government to do these on our own. When we do, we do them on our own.
Thank you. Yes, sir, the red mic.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. John White, 245 Maple Road. I'd like to talk a little bit about Greenwood Park. My wife and I, my wife Louise and I have had the good fortune of living at Greenwood Park for close to 40 years. It's a really nice park. It's well-maintained. It has lots of activities, and it's a neighborhood park. It's a park where people come after school or during weekends. It's not just all the formal activities that are at the park. It's incredibly vibrant. It's my understanding, it's probably the smallest park in town, but probably also has the most day-to-day activities of any of the parks. The park, just to give a brief description, Mary Beth talked a little bit about it. There's one entry into the park, basically, the paved entry. And then the park basically goes from east to west and has two structures. It has the swimming pool on the westerly side in the current senior center, on the easterly side. I think it's the only park in town that basically has two large structures, and again, it's the smallest park. My understanding is, the current proposal is to build a third building in the park in addition to the current facility where the senior center is located, and in addition to the pool. So to build a third building in the park, and there have been some designs, roughly informal designs, as to that. And most of, if not all of the designs, including what has been described as the master plan, is to really put a third building right in the middle of the park. So in other words, it would be right where the ball fields are and kind of where the tennis courts are, because it's not only a building, but it's also a parking lot. My concern is what is going to happen to the park if, in fact, the new building is put right in the middle of the park. I think it would be detrimental to the park, and it would be completely different than at least how I've known it for close to 40 years. The solution seems to be, look at the current footprint where the building is located. I don't think neither the Adult Building Committee nor the Select Board is looking at either renovating or rebuilding on the footprint. I can't quite tell you why that is, but that seems to be what the situation is. They're looking somewhere else to put it, and again, a very small park. Are seniors, should the seniors have either a renovated or a new facility? I think they, I'm a senior, I think they should, without question. Can a new senior center, whether it be renovated or rebuilt, be done at Greenwood Park? In my opinion, it can. But, as it's being proposed now, as I understand it, and I don't mean the exact warrant, but the warrant is for the architecture or the engineering... the warrant is for the architecture or the engineering of now trying to finalize this building somewhere in the middle of the park. And I think that's just a shame. Because that'll change the whole complexity of the park, and it's an easy solution to this, as I've said. And that is, quite simply, use the footprint that you already have. I'm sure that it fits, and it can be done. So I'm asking, and the reason I'm opposing this, is to vote no, to try to get the Building Committee and the Select Board to refocus to where the existing building is, as opposed to trying to squeeze in a third building in the park. And let me just say that I applaud the Building Committee for all the work that they've done. I know they've worked effortlessly on this, and I understand that they've looked at other sites, and this is where they've ended up. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Sal Finestone, 471 Frank Smith Road. Before I get to the prepared remarks, I do want to make a shout-out to the people who were at the meeting last night that voted overwhelmingly for progressive Long Meadow. And it'll show up in my remarks as well. I've been a member of the Council on Aging, oh, I did give you my name, didn't I?
Yes, you did, sir.
Okay. I have been a member of the Council on Aging Board of Directors for seven or eight three-year terms. It's a long time. I'm happy to have done it, and want to continue. At that time, it was called a senior center. Today, it's called an adult center. All of the names apply. All of the time, the center has been housed in an elementary school, remnants of which still exist. It is an old building, located at Greenwood Park, and it will not be sustainable forever. When I came on board, the center was fairly busy, but not overly crowded. That is not the case today. New services and programs were added, more people came of age and began to participate. To add new programs today, and there are many we would like to see added, would be very difficult. We do not have the space. So it comes down to the fact that Long Meadow needs an adult center, a new adult center. More to the point, Long Meadow deserves a new adult center. A favorable vote on Warrant 31 will be a step in that direction. Votes taken at last night's meeting may be described as progress for Long Meadow. A yes vote on 31 will continue that progress for Long Meadow. We have the land, Greenwood Park. We have great ideas, the work done by hard-working, dedicated members of the Building Committee. We do not have the money. A yes vote will provide the money needed for an architectural study. That's what we're asking for tonight. Mentioning just a few of the votes taken last night, I, along with a vast majority of others, voted for a playground at Blueberry Hill School, for windows at Storrs Library, for dugouts at a kids' baseball field, as well as for the much-needed new DPW center. These are examples of the progress that I have been referring to in my remarks. For me, passing Warrant 31 will be a home run for progress in Long Meadow. I hope you agree. Please vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion? I ask that you avoid applauding. Thanks.
Leo Vartanian, 500 Inverness Lane. I also support this warrant, and I feel that we need a dedicated senior center, large enough to handle our rapidly growing senior population. As Mary Beth said, we've got 4,000 now, and that will increase every year. We've talked about balance in the community. Maybe you've heard this several times. Over the past decade, we've spent $100 million for schools, and how much have we spent for our seniors? Maybe a few projects of improving some rooms or the kitchen, of that sort. That's not balanced in terms of providing services for the different segments of our When the senior center was moved, or the senior center was part of Greenwood many years ago, I think it was the wrong move. We put seniors in the same facility as young children. So what? I think it's dangerous. We have senior center, seniors who walk very slowly, with canes, with walkers. And on the other hand, we have young kids that run around and are not, they don't care about making sure that there's nobody in the way. They're kids, and they do that, that's natural. I don't think we ought to be mixing them. One of the questions I have is that, I would like to know, how many towns in Massachusetts have facilities shared by seniors and children?
Sir, are you finished with your remarks?
No.
Okay. I ask you rapid-
Yesterday, yesterday we heard that the increasing taxes are a real burden for the seniors, and I agree. Just as important is having an adequate senior center and adequate programs for some of our seniors. It's the only chance they get to go out, only chance to see some of their friends, and in some cases, to get a good meal. I think it's important that we support this, and that we provide an adequate senior center, dedicated to seniors only. Now, one of the previous speakers said about Greenwood Park, there's a catch-22 in Long Meadow. Every place that is, has been studied is a park, something for kids, something for playgrounds, you can't touch it. So obviously, you either put it in a park, or you don't build it, because there's no other places. So someone, somebody's got to give. You can't have these hundreds and hundreds of acres dedicated to children, and zero acres for seniors. Vote for this article.
Thank you. Yes, at the yellow microphone. Again, I remind you to please withhold your applause during speeches. Thank you. Yes, at the yellow mic, yep.
Ron Nadel, 37 Academy Drive. I have two questions, the first of which is, the article states that this money is to be used for either the design of a new building or renovating the old building, and I would like someone to speak to how it's going to be decided, how the money is going to be utilized. Second question is, if the building were to be reconstructed on the old site, what would the children's aspect of it continue to be?
Thank you. Mr. Crane?
Good questions, thank you. So a previous speaker had mentioned this, the rehabbing the senior center in the existing footprint has been looked at by an architecture firm, but only on, only in the portion of the building currently occupied by the adult center. And it was quite frankly, too small to renovate in an effective way, so their plan call for an addition added on to connect it to the building. But a look at the entire footprint hasn't been done in that detailed of a way, and so when we were crafting the article, we wanted to make sure that we left as many options open for the next step in the process as possible. So that's why it says new and/or renovated. And I think one of the first steps we plan to do if the, if this article is approved, is do a, let's call it a design charrette, and bring some seniors and some members of the public, and maybe some patrons of the children's center in the current building together, and really start talking about, what do we want in a facility, what are the needs? And then split it off, so a dedicated senior center discussion can happen, and that, the framework of that design can be developed. And then, planning for the future of the children's center, as you just suggested, can happen in a separate discussion. So that's the first step we're planning, and I think it's a worthwhile discussion, and I know having these funds to do, to hire someone to facilitate that discussion and can then follow up with design work, will be tremendously beneficial to the process.
The green microphone.
Michael Clark, 169 Cooley Drive, and a member of the School Committee, although I rise tonight as a citizen of Long Meadow. But I have a unique experience as someone who's represented our schools for the last six years, because literally every single thing that we've done, from the construction of this new high school, to the playgrounds that Mr. Finestone mentioned, to the funding of our school, to the funding of our teaching positions, to the supplies that we buy, has been done so through the generous contribution of our senior community. For me, this is a question about, this is terrible.
I'm sorry, I don't know what's going on. Is there someone who can address that with the technical aspect?
For me, this is a question about values, and it's, the question is, are we an inclusive community or an exclusive community? This one's off? No, it's on. It's on.
It's on.
And I think we're an inclusive community, and I've seen that time and time again over the last six years and times before that. Every single thing we've done on the School Committee has been done with the support of our senior community. I think it's critically important that we support them in this endeavor. It's just, it's about shared values, and it's about creating a community that works for every single person. So I strongly support this, this article, and I do hope it's adopted.
Thank you. Yes, again at the yellow mic.
Hi, Pat Dorzak, 361 Frank Smith Road, Long Meadow. I don't have questions, I'd just like to share some of my thoughts.
Well, that, that question, that particular spot is for making motions or for asking questions?
But this doesn't work.
Oh. Okay, you were lined up at the yellow one, that's why I switched. It's fine.
I'm sorry, yeah. Okay. But that is not working. It keeps squeaking. Want me to move?
I don't know what's going on with it, so stay there is fine.
Thank you. Okay, so I just would like to share a few of my thoughts. The current facility is like a nursing home. When you walk in, it's very gloomy. And in the, in the aging, the best things that we're looking for in the senior center are what's currently there, the bathrooms are designed for kindergarteners. There's nutrition, fitness we need, cultural. Right now, we just have a paddle tennis, ping pong, it's very, very limited. We're looking for more engagement with the community, like a cafe in the morning for coffee and donuts, read the paper, lunch, soup and bread, and have speakers come in. The second part of it is, it's 4.1% of the budget is currently toward the seniors, where 75% of the budget is for the school budget. The other towns that all had new facilities, at Chickapi, Agawam, Holyoke, Enfield, East Long Meadow, Westfield, and Amherst, Long Meadow has been written up as one of the best communities to retire to. For the long-term financial health of Long Meadow, with the amount of taxes that the seniors pay, with the minimal financial requirements, to have the town hold its value, move forward with the aging population, I think it's a really critical, critical thing. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sorry for the technical difficulties that we're having. I apologize for that. It's getting addressed now. Mr. Foster?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Richard Foster, 29 Captain Road. I rise in support of this element, and as I've sat here, and almost the last speaker to come up and talk on the positive side, most of my comments have already been addressed by questions from the audience and response from Mr. Crane. I wanted to reassure everybody in the room that this element is directly in line with best management practices for sound municipal and federal planning. This is a process that we have to go through to get the answers to be able to change mics? That we have to go through to be able to-
Please, hold on one moment, please.
To be able to-
Mr. Crane, is it, hold on one moment, please. Mr. Crane, is it being addressed?
Working on it.
Okay.
The speaker above, Mr. Crane, to be comfortable.
Ah.
I think we're okay. Can I continue?
Go ahead, Mr. Foster, yes, go ahead.
Okay. To be able to answer the questions that inevitably will be raised at future meetings when these plans are put together and they're brought before the electorate for a decision at the town meeting. I just wanted to reassure everybody that this is 100% best management practice. This is done on every major job and project across America, both municipal, federal, and even some large corporations like that you have, they go through the same process. They mention the design charrettes. There will be hundreds and hundreds of questions asked, and there will be answers generated that will help in the final design of this process as we move forward. This is the first step. Additional funding, when it's required, will be come up as another article, and they'll be briefed at the town meeting. It's not working too well, is it?
Derek-
Is it a little bit better? Okay. So as I say, I just want to, I just wanted to stand and say that what you have before you is right straight in line with best management practices. You should feel very comfortable that your needs are being cared for, and the process is being outlined in a systematic fashion as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, thank you for your patience. Any other discussion on the motion under Article 31?
Mr. Freedman, you want to go?
Yeah.
As a proud, art card-carrying, silver-gray-haired member of this community-
Mr. Friedman, could you just state your name and address, please?
Kurt Friedman, 24 Ridge, sorry. As a proud, art card-carrying, silver-gray-haired member of this community, I support the funding for an architectural study for the proposed senior center. Becoming a senior citizen is not a guarantee. Persons of all ages should have opportunity for fulfilled life and friendship with others. I feel that an upgraded senior center will wonderfully serve this proud community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nolet, you are standing, and then we'll recognize you.
Madam Moderator, here's Jerry Nolet, 724 Frank Smith Road. I've always believed that coming to town meeting is not to be educated, but you ought to read the agenda, read the warrant, and come to town meeting. I find it disturbing that the Finance Committee, it's changed its mind, and it went from not recommending to recommending. And I hope that the chair made that correction, and I hope that the mindset in this room, who are the champions for the adult center, recognize that they are now recommending the article that we're talking about. I, I've been involved with this project for three years, and historically, I think we've taken one step forward and two steps backward. And I think tonight, it's time to move forward. You know, unlike the School Committee, unlike DPW, the adults in this community have very few champions. The champions in this community are in this room as we speak. This article is asking for us to spend some money to continue this project, to keep it on the table, if you will. And I would like to think that all of us want to see it continue, and to arrive at a conclusion that will satisfy all the town community needs. So again, I ask respectively that you please vote yes on this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, next.
Stephanie Jasmine, 123 Englewood Road. I'm also a School Committee member. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I decided to speak just to give another perspective. I had a grandfather who lived to 99 and utilized the senior center where we lived, and they now have a new senior center in one of the surrounding towns here. But I got to watch and experience what it was like as a granddaughter, watching my grandfather go to the senior center every day for lunch. It meant the world to him, and it meant the world to us, and to my family, and to my parents who supported him towards the end of his life, and how much that meant to everybody. And he, because he- the end of his life and how much, um, that meant to everybody. And he, because he lived so long and he was so active, went through groups of friends. So prior to his, um, passing at the age of 99, he was on his third cohort of friends. And he wouldn't have had that opportunity if we didn't have that senior center. So when we, when I hear people speaking about the senior center and kind of making it seem like us versus them, I thought I'd give a perspective that it's really all of us. And for, um, myself and my friends who are of this age, it's only a matter of 10, 15 years before we're going to have our parents. And I want to have a senior center where if my parents are living with us, and this is the trend, the multi-generational, I want to have a place for them to meet friends and to go through those cohorts. Um, and so I hope that people do support this, um, article.
Thank you. Yes, sir, at the yellow microphone.
Seth Tenenbaum, 28 Artsley Road. Motion to call the question, please.
Uh, we do not actually have the threshold needed for, excuse me, hold on.
Clarification, there's no one in line against it.
Hold on one moment, please. Usually the threshold is, we have, by bylaw, we have five in favor, five opposed. If there's somebody who's standing to speak, I allow that person to speak. And there may be somebody after that person who has spoken perhaps who will get up to go and speak against it. And so without having met that five and five, as long as there's somebody standing in line, I must allow them to continue to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Elizabeth Barron, 102 Riverview Ave. Thank you, Madam Moderator. I will make my remarks very brief, but I did want to give my perspective on this project. Um, I'm in full support of the adult center. Um, I just wanted to mention that seven years ago, uh, I co-chaired the Lancer Pride Committee, which was the political action committee put forth to build this high school. And in the process of, of working on that committee, I met with many, many seniors in town. I spoke with seniors at Glen Meadow, Stores Library, the, was called the senior center then, now it's the adult center. Um, and more than relaying information to them and trying to educate them about the project, I listened. And guess what? The seniors in this town get it. They want to invest in their community. They understand and they appreciate the need for the new high school. They did then and they understood the need and the, um, desire to invest in their community. So I'm asking in turn that we go ahead and support this adult center. I just wanted to mention that we should support it for all of the people in this room right now. Whether you're going to use it in the next few years, we're all going to use it. We're all going to be seniors eventually. Um, this is a win for the town. We're stronger and we're a better community when we support each other. I firmly believe that and this isn't a senior issue. It's an entire town issue. And in voting in support for this, it's a win for our entire community. Article 31 is going to move this project forward. Let's do it.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Steven Matts, 171 Conference Lane. Madam Moderator, I'd like to point out that the, the warrant is talking about allocating $200,000. It's not whether or not we should have a senior center. Uh, given the fact that no one has spoken to that, that issue, I'd like to call the question.
Well, if there's no one else who, uh, calling the question is not debatable since you spoke beforehand.
I'm sorry, Ms. Moderator. I, in address of the, my question, why is no one standing up here to talk about the $200,000? We have, we have talked about this issue for the last three town meetings and it's been settled. Everybody has, we've been voted several times that we're going to have a, a senior center. The, the question that is addressed in the warrant is to pay the money and no one has spoken to that, uh, that motion. So please ask people to speak specifically to that motion or please call the question.
Sir, I understand your perspective. We heard from the town manager who spoke, and, uh, the, uh, adult center building committee regarding the need for the money to do the design charrette and the planning for this. That has spoken to the money. So all of the people who have spoken this evening thus far have spoken to the issue. If you would like to ask a question of somebody specifically, excuse me, if you would like to ask a question specifically of somebody, I will recognize you to ask that question. Otherwise, uh, it is my ruling that everyone here has spoken to the issue. Now, I saw two people come to the mic, but I didn't know who came there first. You want to do rock, paper, scissors?
Thanks, Madam Moderator. Dave Horowitz, 18 Circle Road. Proud member of the DPW Building Committee. Uh, thank you. This body was great last night. Uh, also Chair of the Park Board. I'm here as a citizen tonight, though, to support this project, move this project along. I want to commend the finance committee, the school committee, the select board, the town manager, but most of all, the adult center building committee for the dedicated passion to keep this thing moving forward. It's real simple. Approve this tonight and this is one of the three projects that we're going to deal with. Let's move it along and take advantage of it. Please vote yes.
Sir, are you a voter?
Uh, I am.
What is your name and address?
Matthew Berardi, 21 Hillside Terrace.
Thank you.
I came to ask a question of, with the approval of this new building and project, will it impact schools in any way such as the music program, which has been trying to be defunded for several periods of time?
Will it impact the music program is your question?
Uh, yes.
And the schools in general? Okay, I'll, uh, address that question to the school committee if you have anyone who can answer that. Seeing no one else who wishes to speak, uh, I think we're ready to come to a vote. This motion requires a simple majority. Would all those in favor of the motion under Article 31 raise your blue cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed to the motion under Article 31 raise your blue cards? Hold on a second, please. The motion passes, majority affirmative vote. We shall now come to Article 32. Ms. Angelides.
I move in terms of the article.
Is there a second? You may speak to it, Ms. Angelides.
Acceptance of this bylaw would create a stormwater enterprise fund and a fee that will go in effect beginning in fiscal year 2019, July 1, 2018, to offset costs associated with stormwater management program designed to promote the health and safety of the public, to protect property from flooding and damage caused by stormwater runoff, and to protect and manage water quality by controlling the level of pollutants and stormwater runoff and the flow of water as conveyed by man-made and natural stormwater management systems and facilities. The bylaw, which is posted on the town's website and is available upon request, would give the town the resources to fulfill the requirements of the municipal separate stormwater systems regulations recently pulmated by the U.S. EPA. The proposed fee would be $2.25 per resident household. A fee based on impervious area would also be addressed on non-residential properties. The town of Long Meadow is looking at an unfunded liability from the EPA of around $200,000. It could be more if discovered with testing of our streams and brooks that the mitigation is necessary. This fund would put the cost of clean water on the whole community, not just residents who pay property taxes. All the commercial properties and nonprofits will have to pay their fair share depending on the amount of impervious surfaces. The cost to residents is a flat fee. Our current stormwater costs average about $1.5 million a year. That's paid for completely by property taxes. Please support this fund to pay for the EPA's clean water initiatives and set up a system that everyone pays their fair share of this unfunded liability. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board recommendations? Uh, then open to the floor. Yep, Mr. Crane?
For those who were at the annual town meeting last year, you may remember that we had a, uh, an appropriation of $50,000, uh, to do the study, uh, to create the bylaw that we are presenting to you in the warrant. Uh, I have here from a tie-in bond, our engineer who helped us with the project, Tracy Damski, and she has just a few slides, a very brief overview of stormwater management issues and why, uh, this is an important tool in our toolbox from a both environmental stewardship standpoint and a financial management standpoint, and why more and more communities, uh, across the nation are implementing these things. So I'd invite Tracy to come up and just go through the slides briefly.
Thank you, Steven. Uh, so a stormwater enterprise fund is very similar to a fee that you're paying for your water and your sewer services. Stormwater is another utility that is, um, provided by the, the town. When you look at doing a stormwater enterprise fund, the reason that many communities are looking at these are to provide a dedicated funding source that can be used to address stormwater issues and concerns, including flooding, um, culvert repairs, catch basin cleaning, street sweeping, um, along with, uh, also meeting the regulatory requirements as had been indicated previously. Um, so it's a dedicated funding source. It's a way to look at it equitably. Um, most, all of your stormwater, um, costs right now are being funded directly from property tax. And the one way to make the fee more equitable and to pay for the services are to spread this out using, um, impervious surfaces. So as, as a indicator of stormwater runoff. So that's a way to spread the costs out to all users of the system and make it more equitable. Across the nation, there are over 1,500 stormwater utilities that have been put in place. New England has about dozen to two dozen right now, um, because we have, uh, I'll say been on the, uh, the, the, not the leading edge on the EPA permits, but there's a new permit that has come out, um, and is come, becomes effective as of July 1, which has a number of new requirements, as I'll, I'll note in a moment. Oops. Not sure if I'm, yeah, if you could forward. Thanks. So again, it's a user fee based on impervious surface because we recognize that impervious surface has, um, significant contributions to water quality. Um, and the image on your right shows what the impervious, impervious surfaces are that we're looking at. So we're looking at building coverage at, um, driveways, at sidewalks. Thank you. So the MS4 permit is, um, it's municipal separate storm sewer system. This is the EPA's new permit that covers stormwater management throughout Long Meadow. The new permit becomes effective as of July 1 and there's a number of requirements that will increase the town's costs, including sampling and monitoring at all outfalls, um, making sure that there's detailed mapping available, increasing system maintenance, additional catch basin cleaning, street sweeping, and increased documentation and reporting requirements. All of these add up to some significant costs. We're looking at over $600,000 over the course of the five-year term and then there's some additional requirements that go beyond that. Thanks. So out of, um, looking at the overall Long Meadow stormwater costs, one of the first things that we did is try to calculate what Long Meadow is spending currently on stormwater. Um, so we, you know, teased out the annual operation costs, um, capital projects, as well as the MS4, um, compliance costs. So it's about $1.5 million. The MS4 compliance is about 160 to $200,000, depending on the permit year because there's different requirements throughout the, the different permit year. But stormwater costs also go to improving culverts and stream channels as well as continued operation and maintenance of the system. Oops, one more. So looking at what the overall stormwater fee represents, we're looking to fund up to $200,000 annually. This is, uh, results in a $2.25 per month fee for single-family residences. That means it's a flat fee of $27 a year. Um, other, so non-single-family resident properties, so these are your commercial properties, um, the institutional properties, properties that, uh, right now aren't currently paying taxes will be, their rate will be based on the amount of impervious surface they have. Um, and so the, the top rate payer for, um, non-single-family resident, uh, non-single-family uses will be $297 a month. And the top rate pairs, as you can see, there's, um, a number of Town of Long Meadow properties, um, but there's also Penn Central, um, Bay Path College. So there are some properties who otherwise wouldn't, institutional properties who otherwise wouldn't be paying to support the stormwater system. And that's it. So that's my presentation for this evening.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll come to a, oh, there is a question or a comment.
Good evening. Scott Soars, 39 Albemarle Road. Uh, just a question. I, I know the explanation at the end of the, the article says $2.25 or $27 per year, but the language in the article itself, uh, says that the fee would be set annually. And what I'm curious about is whether or not that will be guaranteed to have that fixed or if the language in the warrant article needs to be changed to reflect a fixed $2.25 per month or $27 per year.
Is that all your questions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Crane?
So it would be a fee similar to, we have, obviously if you, if you do business with Town Town, there's a wide variety of fees that get set annually, um, or semi-annually by the select board, and this would be a fee similar to those. Uh, I think, uh, in, if you watch the discussion on the stormwater utility at the select board meeting level, uh, the commitment was really just to offset new costs. We already spent about a million and a half bucks, as Tracy laid out. Uh, and so this additional cost would displace something that we're already doing with general fund money. And so it's just to cover the new costs as this new unfunded mandate is implemented. So, but it will be regarded like any, like any fee they have, which, um, you know, they review every year.
Thank you. Mr. Friedman?
Just, just follow-up to that then? So it's accurate that the fee, uh, could change from year to year, starting now at 27. We're, we're voting on that, but ultimately, next year it could be more than that. Is that, that's accurate?
Mr. Crane?
Conceptually, yes, it could. Uh, but I will say that one of the things the board's going to do if this bylaw is adopted is develop a set of policies like we have for our water and sewer rates, uh, and, uh, develop some guidelines for how the fee, you know, fee should be addressed. Uh, can we do measures for abatements for non-residential properties? So if you have a large commercial center and you want to, and you can manage stormwater on-site, can you get a credit for that, those types of things? These are, these are things that are being done in, in these many, these many stormwater utilities are being established, have many different variations of policies and that's one of the next steps.
Mr. Friedman?
Kurt Friedman, 24 Ridge. Um, I'm opposed to the establishment of an enterprise fund for this particular purpose. I am in strong support of our present policy of maintaining the storm sewers and maintaining the environmental integrity of our Long Meadow storm sewer system. The authority to maintain and control and even set fees for our storm sewers are already established by MGL, Chapter 83, Section 16. I see no reason for this further government regulation. Also, based on just some informal calculations, the total acreage of Long Meadow, not including the Connecticut River, but the total land area of Long Meadow, it's approximately 5,700 acres. The approximate acreage of our roads is about 475 acres, about 7% of the total. The acreage of our driveways is approximately 160 acres, only about 3%. I don't see what benefit we will collectively receive if we somehow try to control, um, the rate at which raindrops pass through our driveways. Other more significant issues are the overall topography. Example, my neighbor across- are the overall topography. Example, my neighbor across the street has a very steep north-facing lot. The square footage of their grassy areas, which is very steep, and when it's frozen, is a tremendous amount of rainfall, which will then cascade down onto the road. So I do not see what benefit this, this makes, and I don't think that measuring the square footage of our driveways accurately determines our overall usage of the system. I think this is a nebulous, inaccurate, and ridiculous way to assess this. I think that since we are a majority, a residential community, I don't want Big Brother out there with tape measures and yardsticks looking at my driveway. It's none of anybody's business. Most people with their roofs discharge their rainwater to their garden or away from their house. Those people who have to discharge their rainwater into the public way do so out of necessity, either because of the condition of the soils, or because they don't want to have a wet basement. If people start investing in water retention basins and start ponding water on their properties, it's only going to lead towards flooded basements, mold, and opportunities for mosquito breeding. It will not be in our better interest. So I do not think this is a fair or proper way that this should be managed. Some of the commercial properties, yes, we want to control their water retention, I think that's fine. But I don't think that this article will better serve Long Meadow. I ask you to vote no.
Thank you. Yes, sir, at the yellow microphone?
Yes, Ed Slepki, 26 White Oaks Drive. I've got a question around the declining block structure. Why do we have a declining block structure that presumably will allow larger parking lots and such to be taxed at a lower rate? Does not make sense to me.
All right, is that, is that all of your questions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Crane?
The first thing I want to do is say that the rate, all residential properties pay are one unit. So there's just, so there's no measuring of driveways and things like that. Everyone pays the same. Every single, every single residential property is one unit, one rate. When we did the analysis of the non-residential sizes, we looked at several different methods of assessing the fee, and we felt that the graduated structure really yielded the most equitable and fair distribution of the fees for the commercial properties, because some of the fees got extremely high, and we didn't, we didn't feel, we felt, we've evaluated as somewhat burdensome to some of the commercial property owners.
I'm amazed.
Next, Mr. Elias.
Richard Elias, 608 Frank Smith Road. I'm just going to give a little clarification, if I could. I don't think anybody in this room detests paying taxes and fees any more than I do. But the federal government has set what's going to be happening, and the taxpayers of this town are going to have to meet those standards, and we're going to be paying for it. This system may not seem the best thing or anything, but at least those other entities in this town who do not pay the taxes and receive the services are going to be paying part of this for the community. Am I right, Mr. Crane?
Are those all your questions?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Mr. Crane?
Richard, that's correct. This is a fee, not a tax. So all property owners pay, including tax-exempt property owners.
Yes.
Cynthia Summer, 57 Farmington Avenue. I have two questions. The first is that it appears that right now we are paying for these services through our taxes, and we're moving them to be paying for them for, through a fee. So my question is, does that put us in a better position to not reach our levy limit? Does that help us that, in that way?
Mr. Crane, wait a second. And what's your second question?
Oh, sorry. And the second question, what was my second question? Oh, my second question was, are all municipal, this EPA ruling that goes into effect in July, are all municipalities subject to creating these stormwater districts?
Thank you, Mr. Crane.
They're not require, all municipalities in the country are subject to the MS-4 permit. Not all of them are going to create stormwater utilities. Many are. The impact of the rule is different for different communities. Older cities have their sewer system overflow and their storm system connected. So if there's a flooding event, sewage goes into their destination of rivers, or lakes, or streams, or something. Long Meadow is completely separate, so our drainage structure is, goes into our dingles, but it's our street drains and things like that. Our sanitary sewer goes in a completely separate way over to the treatment facility at Bondi's Island. So we don't have as high a burden to meet the requirements of the permit as others, but there are the educational, the testing, and the other expenses that we're going to incur. And so to answer your first question, it's a small amount, the $200,000 a year. What we don't, what we don't want to do is displace a current function by having to meet these new costs when the opportunity to create this enterprise fund at a pretty low rate at this time is there in the future. Could it help, potentially? Like I said, it's a tool in the toolbox for environmental and financial management.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Charles Toy, 45 Williamsburg Drive. I have a few questions. One, in creating this new division, will there be new employees added? Will those employees be full-time? If we are adding new employees, is there room at the new DPW building for them?
Yes, sir.
And lastly, Frank, I was a little confused on the list that the woman from Tiggy and Bond presented, but would things like churches be considered, would they be taxed or feed? Would they be considered a, an impervious area?
So you've got several questions. Mr. Crane, can you address all of them?
Lightning round. Here we go.
Thank you.
First one, yes, all property owners, churches, commercial strip centers, homeowners, everybody. It applies equal, it applies to everyone. These functions that we're doing now are currently done by our Department of Public Works. So DPW does this work now. They will continue to do the work in the future. We do not foresee the need to add additional staff. I think if there were additional tasks that were beyond our reach, if you will, for our current department, we would look to contract some of that work out. There are engineering firms and consultants that will go ahead and test your outfalls and do those types of things. So we would look at outsourcing first, but at this time, we don't anticipate adding staff. Did I get all of them? So the new DPW will hold them all, yes.
And then the church is considered yes. Mr. Friedman?
Based on, based on MGL, Chapter 83, Section 16, we at this time can charge anyone a fee for this service if we choose to. So those nonprofits that are not contributing to the storm sewer, our selectmen, based on our current statutes, can issue charges. This enterprise fund is not necessary.
Thank you. Any further discussion? See, okay, seeing none, we shall come directly to a vote. This motion under Article 32 requires a simple majority. Would all those in favor of the motion under Article 30, excuse me, 32, raise your blue cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed please raise your blue cards? The motion passes majority affirmative vote. Article 33.
Moderator, I move the article, I move in terms of the article, 33.
Mr. LaCusa, could you say that a little louder, please?
Yes, I move in terms of the article.
All right, is there a second? Motion's been made in second. Do you want me to speak to it?
Okay, "This fund is under the direction of the Veterans Services Department. Will enable the town to act expeditiously when responding to immediate needs of veterans and their dependents. Expenditures from the fund can be made without further appropriation and will only be utilized to provide emergency food, transportation, heat, and oil expenses."
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote on Article 33. Are you seeking recognition, Mr. Foster? Oh, okay. All those in favor of the motion under Article 33, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed please raise your blue cards? Thank you. Motion passes majority affirmative vote. Article 34.
Madam Moderator, I move in terms of the article.
Is there a second? Motion's been made in second. Do you want me to speak to it?
"The modification of this bylaw will bring consistency in the way the town handles past due water and sewage accounts when compared to handling of past due property and motor vehicle excise tax accounts. Currently, property and motor vehicle excise demand notices are sent no earlier than 10 days after the due date. The demand notice for property and motor vehicle excise carries a fee of $15. The $15 fee was set by vote on May 10, 2016 Annual Town Meeting in Article Number 23. Inasmuch as there was a concern over the Water and Sewage Commissioners shutting off the water to delinquent accounts, this amended bylaw does not change the provisions currently in place regarding such. It has been the policy of the Commissioners not to exercise this right, but in place thereof to a lien on the property to which the delinquent water and sewage user applies." Fees apply.
Any further discussion on Article 34?
I guess he's coming up in, yeah.
Is he seeking recognition? Are you making a motion?
I will be.
Kindly go to the yellow one, please. Thanks. Go to the yellow microphone. Thanks.
Kurt Friedman, 24 Ridge. This article came up last year, and there was significant discussion. I had, although I-
If you're making, excuse me, if you're making a motion, you can make the motion. If you're, if you're speaking against it, you can speak against it, but-
I want to introduce my-
You cannot. You can make a motion, and then, if it's seconded, you may speak to it.
I make a motion to amend this article to include language that would protect the interests of vulnerable citizens from their water being shut off. And I have the specific language. I've given it to the moderator. I could read it aloud if you wish.
Please, because what we vote on is the oral motion. We don't vote on the written language unless it has been printed in the warrant.
Proposed amendment to Article 34. "All bills for water services shall be payable upon receipt. If a bill for water services remains unpaid for 40 days after the date of billing, a demand fee equal to $15 shall be assessed, and the Department of Finance and Administration shall send a notice to the delinquent account that the Water and Sewer Commissioners have the authority to cause the water service to be turned off if the bill for water services are not paid on or before 55 days after the date of billing." A 48 written notice by certified mail and/or-
48, excuse me, sir. Could you clarify that? A 48 what?
A 48-hour-
Thank you.
-written notice by certified mail and/or other documented communication shall be required prior to water being shut off. Termination of service may only take place Monday through Thursday between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. If the water supply has been turned off at a water use location, the Commissioners shall not cause the water to be turned on again until the amount due, including all assessed interest and demand fees, together with $25 for the restoration of the services, have been paid. Nothing shall be construed to prevent termination for reasons of safety, health, cooperation with civil authorities, or any other reason for which termination power is specifically granted in Massachusetts' general laws. Service shall not be shut off to any residential customer if: A. The customer or any person in the residence is seriously ill, as substantiated by a medical doctor; B. A child under 12 months of age lives in the residence; C. Between October 15th and May 15th, if the home is heated by a steam or hydraulic hot water boiler; D. The customer or other residents are 65 years of age or older; E. The customer is unable to pay for services because of financial hardship, as defined in 220 CMR 25.012. A customer shall be responsible for, and accordingly shall be subject to termination for non-pavement of any portion of any bill which is not the subject of a dispute."
That's the motion to amend Article 34 as it's currently printed in the warrant. I have a copy of it. Is there a second?
I second it.
The motion has been made in seconded. Hold on. Before you speak to it, I want to confer with the town council and the clerk to make sure that this motion is in order. I would like first some clarification from you as to the language that differs. I see that the section, "Services," "Service shall not be shut off," that section with, that they're in the labeled A through E, that is new, as well as the 40 days and the 55 days, those are new. Yes?
Madam Moderator, I have this form electronically on a thumb drive. If there's an interest in putting it up on the screen, that could be made available.
Yes, and just as a general bit of information to all town residents, at any point you would like to make any kind of amendment, or if you have any visual aids, it is much preferable to give them to me in advance so that we can have this set up right away. Hold on one moment. A brief recess of two minutes. All right, we are back from recess. This motion is in order. You can go to the yellow microphone, and it, the proposed amendment is going to be put up on the screen. It will act as a substitute motion, folks. It's within the scope of the article, the same, it's the same subject matter. However, there's different language, and Mr. Friedman- However, there's different language, and Mr. Friedman is going to speak to that motion. Go ahead, Mr. Friedman.
I was waiting for it to go up on the-
Oh, I'm sorry.
If we could zoom in on that, please?
And I shall ask you to keep your remarks to just about five minutes or under, if possible. Thank you.
Sure, sure. Last year, this CMR article was introduced, and there was significant discussion, and it was voted down. The primary questions that came up were, when exactly is a bill due? And there was not an accurate answer. And the other concerns that were raised was that turning off water is rather egregious, and although it may not happen very often, the thought of losing one's water means you can't live in your house anymore. You have to move out. In addition to that, if you lose water and you have sick or elderly or very young infants, it can really create a significant hardship. And in some cases, if your home is heated with steam, with a steam boiler or a hydronic hot water boiler, turning off the water means that you lose heat. If it's the wintertime and you lose heat, you'll have dramatic damage to your home, and your insurance company won't cover you because you failed to provide heat. So, I strongly support the need of the water commissioners to collect their money and to be able to pursue delinquent customers. And the language in this first paragraph is actually identical in terms of the ability to collect money, and the timing of it is identical to what appears in this warrant article tonight. I was referencing, and if you want to look on your cellphone, Two-Twenty CMR two-five point zero-zero. It's the billing and termination procedures of the Department of Public Utilities. This is the same protocol that the electric company and the gas company follow, and it's followed for water companies that are subject to DPU regulation. The Long Meadow Water and Sewer Department is not subject to DPU regulations. But I wanted to impose here, I am not saying we have to follow this statute. What I did is I picked the standards which are contained in the statute because I feel this represents the standards of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So, the water department, or we as a community, can adopt whatever policies we see fit, but I wanted to be able to compare to an established standard which exists in the Commonwealth already. And I wanted to be able to protect the interests of those citizens that might be most vulnerable. Keep in mind that this policy, if it passes tonight, does not, does not mean that a citizen, even if they are disadvantaged or have a hardship, does not mean that they don't have to be responsible for their water bills. They still do. It just means that their water can't be shut off. In terms of where this policy is written, if the statute defines when a bill is received as three days after the billing date. So, whether it's a day in the mail or two days in the mail, it doesn't matter. When the bill is, when the bill date is established, three days after is basically when the clock starts ticking. So, including in that, and the language is always from, in reference of the billing date. So, if a bill is unpaid forty days after the billing date, then the customer can be assigned a demand fee of fifteen dollars. And then I'm asking that the, a notice go out to that customer advising them that the water and sewer commissioners would have the authority to cause the water service to be turned off if the bill's not paid on or before fifty-five days after the date of billing. The fifty-five days here, when you look in the math in the existing warrant article, is the same. Same period of time would go by. Forty-eight hours before a shut-off, before a shut-off is issued, there would have to be a written notice by certified mail or other documented communication, and that shut-off would have to occur Monday through Thursday, eight a.m. to four p.m. So, this is the language in the state statute. The next paragraph, beginning, "if the water supply has been turned off," that's the same language that appears in the warrant article. But then getting to the, this other section, and once again, "if the water needs to be shut off for some other type of emergency that has nothing to do with a water bill," certainly the authorities have a right to do so. But then, in the next paragraph, beginning with, "service shall not be shut off to any residential customer if," if we could scroll and maybe zoom in a little bit on that. From personal experience, when someone is gravely ill in your house, paying bills is something that's maybe the last thing in your mind, and people can fall behind paying their bills, and that's certainly happened in our household. And so, the last thing someone needs is to find out that their water's shut off or to go through that hassle, because that means they need to move out of the house, which may be virtually impossible or even life-threatening. If you have an infinite home, your water shouldn't be shut off because it's just so vital to public health. And then, once again, if you depend on water to make your heating system work, you shouldn't have your water shut off because that will damage your home and cause financial damages magnitudes greater than a fifty or seventy-five dollar water bill. If a resident is sixty-five years of age or older, and once again, these are the same standards that exist in Two-Twenty CMR twenty-five. So, this are the standards of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Thank you. Could you wrap it up, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then, lastly, if the customer's unable to pay because of financial hardship. And once again, "a customer shall be responsible for, and accordingly shall be subject to termination for nonpayment of any portion of any bill which is not the subject of a dispute." So, this is not a way to buy your way out of financial responsibility. It's just a matter of protecting the interests of the most vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we are speaking on the motion to amend. Someone at the red microphone?
I'm waiting for the motion, not the amend.
Okay. So, is there anyone who would like to speak on the motion? Yes, Mr. Pesterzik.
Paul Pesterzik, Finance Director. As the administrator of this, the, I just find it's going to be very burdensome to follow through. With the, with the original intent of the original motion, it was to simplify the way that the town handles it, handles the water and sewer billing in a fashion that's similar to the motor vehicle excise and property. And that was the original intent. I know there was some discussion last year about shutting off water. And if that's the real issue, then, you know, maybe we should just eliminate that part of it. But this is going to add a whole nother layer of administration with these dates and procedures and things of that nature that I personally just think are unnecessary.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion to amend?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Michael Henderson, Forty-two Williston Drive. I'm against both the, well, I will speak to the amendment now. I will speak to the main motion later. I think it's just wrong to turn people's water off with relatively short notice. While I do believe that Mr. Friedman has given this quite a bit of thought and has a number of exceptions here. Given the timeframes, it is very easy for mail to be miscarried. I don't know how many times I've gotten my neighbor's mail by mistake. I don't know how many people are snowbirds and may be out of town for six months or whatever, and perhaps they get the bill immediately after they left. And what we are talking about is destroying people's homes. On the other hand, what can be done is some sort of financial fine system or interest system on any water bills without turning the water off within what I consider to be relatively short periods of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion to amend? Are you seeking recognition? Are you seeking recognition? Mr. Pesterzik.
Can I still speak on it?
Yes, you may. And then, Mr. Pesterzik, since you've already spoken, we allow people who have not had a chance to speak, a chance to speak first, and then you'll get recognized. Thank you for understanding. I really appreciate it. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Sarah Tyson. I'm at thirty-five Barrington Road. I'm against the amendment. I think that this is pretty awful. It's not a lot of time for people. Financial hardships are something that's something, it's very hard for somebody to overcome, not to mention the stigma of the water truck driving up and down your truck, driving up and down your street, turning off your water and turning it back on. As somebody that has had that happen to me as a young, as a young mom, I think that this is awful. There should not be, I want to mention, somebody else that spoke, there should not be scrutiny for financial hardships. We should be, as a town inclusive, and I'm completely against this, not to mention the interests that accrue. If you're already behind, how does one expect to get ahead? I think that this is wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pester-
Point of information? Point of information?
Which I have also, thank you.
The point, are, is it a procedural motion? There a procedural question you have?
It's a point of information. This article-
If it's, if it's an argument about the content, I'd ask you to wait. So, if it's in response to someone else?
It's clarification.
If it's about content, if it's about the content of the argument?
There's an obvious misunderstanding.
Well, then I will ask you to wait. Mr. Pesterzik had been up first, and then we'll get to you in just a moment. Mr. Pesterzik.
Again, a point of clarification. We do charge interest after thirty days. The actual due date is printed on the water and sewer bills. It's very noticeable. Interest does start to accrue after that in that regard. And again, that is very similar to the motor vehicle excise tax and property taxes. You receive those also.
Mr. Friedman?
This amendment provides support to people who are in the hardship situations I described. The warrant article as written, it appears on, in our town meeting notice, does not provide these protections. The reason why I'm promoting this is to protect the interests of those who would suffer in such a situation. The timing of this, in terms of when these measures would take place, is identical to what appears in the warrant article. The forty days and fifty-five days are identical to how the original warrant article was written. And so, from the financial interests of the water commissioners, their interests are protected exactly. This protects people from a hardship situation. Years ago, I provided pro bono assistance to a woman in our community who had a water leak in her home. She left her home, a pipe froze. She had over a million gallons of water flow through her basement, through her toilet, and she received a bill of several thousand dollars. She couldn't afford to pay the bill, and the water commissioners wouldn't turn her water on to provide heat to her hydronic hot water boiler. And so, she was really in a dilemma. So, I came to her assistance. We worked out a resolution. She was able to get her water turned on and her heat turned on so she could restore her house again. But I know many people who could find themselves in a hardship situation, and they should provide protection. At the same time, the financial interests of the town are preserved. I am not asking for any free passes or exceptions to somebody's financial responsibility. It's just that a person should not be threatened to have to leave their home or be threatened to have their home receive significant damage by shutting their water off. That's what this amendment says. So, if you have concerns about your water being shut off, this amendment will much better represent your interests over the previous article. Thank you.
Thank you. And I allowed Mr. Friedman to speak from that mic because he was responding. Generally, if you're in favor of something, I ask you to stand at the green one. It just helps everyone. Yes, Ms. Jasmine?
Stephanie Jasmine, One Twenty-three Englewood Road. I appreciate everything that is in this amendment. The reason I can't vote for it right now is because a discussion has not taken place with the town as to how they would implement it. How are they going to know who is ill? How are they going to know? All of these factors. And while I agree with everything and what is behind this, I think that it's deserving of more discussion with the town. With that said, I'm also, and I'll speak to that when we get to it, but I'm against the warrant article as it's written now. But I can't vote in favor of this only because it is so detailed, and that discussion hasn't taken place.
Mr. Foster, are you seeking recognition?
No, no.
Oh, okay. Mr. Friedman?
The standard practice-
I ask you now to go to the, if you're speaking in favor, just, it helps everybody to stay consistent. Thank you.
Clarification, point of information. Two-Twenty CMR twenty-five says that if someone is given notice to have their water shut off, then that authority has to now inquire, are there any seniors, young children, or people with illness in the home before they shut off the water? So, there are certain, and I agree that there's certain procedures and policies, and there are details which need to be discussed. But I want to just address that topic to provide some relief, some protection to those citizens in our community who are vulnerable.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion to amend? Then seeing none, we shall come directly to a vote on the motion to amend. This is a substitute motion. The motion is moving in terms of the article that is on the overhead projection. This motion requires a simple majority. If this motion, hold on one moment, please. If this motion passes, we shall still have to come to a vote on the main motion. If this motion fails, we still have to come to another vote. So, we're doing two votes on this article. The first vote is the motion to amend. It's Mr. Friedman's motion, as you see above. All those in favor of the motion to amend, please raise your blue cards. Thank you. All those opposed to the motion to amend, please raise your blue cards. The chair is in doubt. We shall have to do a hand count. I ask for your patience. Please stay in your seats. I ask the tellers to report to duty. There are two tellers in each section. I kindly ask for everybody who's in a section to stay in that section. Don't move around just yet. What will happen is the tellers will count all of the yes votes row by row. They will direct you to raise your hands, and you shall follow their directions. They will then report the totals to me. Does everyone have two, are there two counters for each section? Two there? Okay, we need two there, two here. In the back section, are there two? Or the back left section on the floor? Okay, there's two there, there's two there, two there, and two there, two there. All right. Please follow the direction of the counters. I ask for those of you who are starting to count, you may begin the count of the yes votes only. Yes, question? You, yes, you're part of the votes. The tellers get to vote. So, you're going to wait for the tellers. Please wait. Folks, listen carefully. The tellers are going to tell you when to raise your hands. If you're voting yes, pay attention to the tellers. They are going to tell you when you can raise your hands. And they will tell you to put your hands down when you're done. You are starting the count. When the tellers are ready to report their tallies, they shall go to the yellow microphone in the middle. Only yes votes. Ms. Gore, or, who is ready to report? Front left bleacher, nine yes.
Right front bleacher, 11 yes.
Wait, one moment, please, until I recognize you. I need to put them into the spreadsheet. Ms. Most?
Right front bleacher, 11 yes.
Thank you.
The house front, left.
Kindly wait until I come back to the mic. Thank you so much. Yes, Ms. Hoppie.
Okay. House front, left, and floor, three.
Yes, Mr. McCurk.
Right front, nine.
Thank you.
Rear, left bleacher, five.
Thank you.
Right and back.
Yes, Mr. Gaffney.
Yes. The floor and the back, 38 yes votes.
The floor and the back, which side? This one? Thank you. Yes, Ms. Barron.
Floor, rear, left, 19 yes votes.
Thank you. Yes.
Rear right bleacher, 21 for yes.
Thank you. All the yes votes have been counted. You may now count the no votes on the amendment. Again, please wait for the tellers to direct you to raise your hands, and then lower them when they say that you may lower them. All right, Ms. Most, are you ready?
Yes.
Kindly report the section, and I ask you to quiet down, please, folks. Ms. Most?
Okay. The right front bleacher was two no votes.
Two, thank you. Ms. Barron.
Floor, rear, left, 36 no.
Thank you. Mr. Hicks?
Front left bleacher, four no.
Four.
Rear, rear, left bleacher, two.
Thank you. Yes.
Right front, 19.
19. Yes, Ms. Gaffney.
Right rear, 19.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Hoppie.
Left front, 13.
And right rear bleacher, 13 for no.
13.
13.
The total is yes, 115, no, 108. The motion to amend has been approved. We shall now come to a discussion of the motion as amended. Is there any discussion on the motion as amended? Seeing none? Oh, there is somebody. Hold on one moment, please.
Brett Lukazek, 38 Crescent Road. One question, being as these rules are fairly complex, and they're going to be awfully interesting trying to enforce, is there going to be enough room in the DPW for the next employee we need to hire?
All right, is, does anyone want to address that question? And are those all your questions, sir?
That's it.
Thank you.
As was noted, we haven't had a chance to really think about it, but I think we'll be all right.
Any other discussion on the main motion now as amended? Yes, Mr. Friedman?
I just wanted to reiterate that in terms of the collection of the money, what I've proposed provides the same schedule of collection of money, and the same schedule if the water has to be turned off. But what this motion does, the focus and goal and reason for having this amendment is to protect those citizens in our community who are most vulnerable. If you, if you vote against this amendment.
It's not, no longer an amendment, it's now the main motion.
Okay. If this is not, if you vote against it, then you don't have any additional rights or protections. Now, I understand that in terms of shutting off the water, it has been done very infrequently. But still, I have been involved with situations where this was an issue, and I understand the fundamental right and need to have water service, and the fundamental right to be able to live and stay in your home in a healthful manner. Thank you.
Yes.
Stephanie Jasmine, 123 Englewood Road. While I was going, I was against the original amendment, and then I was against this one. It was for the reason that the days were not long enough. You don't even have your cable shut off in that amount of time. So while I believe that this is more complex, I also think that the worst-case scenario, if it's hard to carry out right now, is that nobody's water's going to be shut off, and it'll come back to town meetings. So for that reason, I'm in favor of this, and I hope that you vote yes.
Yes, sir.
Just a question of clarification. Sorry, Stephen, that's 171 Coventry. The way the original one was written was payable upon, at the 30 days after bill is due, and this one says upon receipt. So could we clarify as to which date is really supposed to be? Because receipt could be any time in the year.
Mr. Friedman?
The statute in Massachusetts is based on the date of billing, because there is some uncertainty in terms of when things get mailed. So they allow, it's a three-day period by law is the accepted mailing time. So it's whenever the billing date is, plus three days. And in looking at that language, the dates that are here, in terms of when, when a person could be subject to the $15 demand fee, and when they could be subject to the water being turned off, match that state statute. And we're consistent with that. And then with the provisions here, it provides protection to the residents. And it's only residential customers, not commercial customers, that provides that protection to avoid that water shut off. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion?
Seth Tenamum, 28 Artsley Road. Just a question. When is the last time somebody's water actually was shut off along Meadow for lack of payment?
Mr. Pasterzik?
My guess is at least 10 years ago. The policy has been to, that we lean on the delinquencies. That policy's been in place for a number of years, and I, it's at least 10 years. I don't remember exactly when, but it goes back quite a ways.
Any further discussion on the motion on Article 34? Mr. Foster, are you seeking recognition?
No, ma'am.
No, oh, okay. If you could wait to. I know, but, but please sit until we're just about ready. Because we may need another hand count, and that's another 12 minutes, sir. You don't want to stand that long. Trust me. All right. Seeing no additional discussion, we'll come directly to a vote on the motion as it has been amended. This requires a simple majority. Would all those in favor of the motion, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed to the motion, please raise your blue cards? The motion passes, majority affirmative vote. Now you can get up, Mr. Foster. Sorry about that. All right. Article 35.
Madam Moderator, I move in terms of the article.
Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
This bylaw amendment will bring our bylaws to conform to our practices. For many years, we have conducted counts of votes with voters raising their voting cards rather than standing in place. That practice, however, does not follow what our bylaw requires. Amending this bylaw will prevent, oh, excuse me, will permit voters to remain seated and raise their voting cards.
Any other discussion on the article? Yes? No. This is a question for you, Mr. Schneider. Mr. Gold?
My question is, does this warrant article therefore say all the votes we took tonight are, violate the bylaws because we didn't follow the bylaws of standing?
Is that a, are you seeking town councils quite?
Mr. Gold, I have not researched that issue. I would advise my client to proactively fix this problem by making the bylaw conform to practice.
Yes, sir.
Madam Moderator, I have a question about the function of the second sentence in this. It reads, "The moderator shall announce that only those voters who occupy seats on the floor of the meeting are eligible to be counted on the vote, but the moderator has the authority to instruct the tellers to count the votes of specific voters who are unable to obtain seats on the floor of the meeting." This would seem that there'd be a way for credential voters to not be counted. So I'm just wondering why. Is that a holdover that should be changed with this new language, or is there a function of that?
That is the existing bylaw. And the way I interpret it, when I read it and follow it, is that, for example, if somebody is in the cafeteria and they are unable to get a seat here, they still may be voted. Their vote may be counted.
Okay, I guess my follow-up then would be, so we're seeing seats, like any location in the gym. So if there's, if there's standing room only, those people would be put into a different room rather than standing in this room?
That's our practice.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we shall come to a vote. This requires a simple majority. Would all those in favor of the motion under Article 35, raise your blue cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed to the motion, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. The motion passes, majority affirmative vote. Article 36.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 200A, Section 9A, which deals with the disposition of abandoned funds by the town.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
Yes, this is an issue brought to our attention by the independent orders of the town, that there's, we lack a comprehensive policy and procedure to deal with the disposition of abandoned property, primarily uncashed outstanding checks of a year or longer. Those are the checks that the town may write to somebody that for some, one reason or another, they don't, they don't cash. Acceptance of the statute outlines the specific steps in dealing with abandoned properties that must be taken before the town can take legal ownership of the property. That is, theoretically, we can write off the check as never being cashed and not going to be cashed. So I move that we support this motion.
Any further discussion on the motion under Article 36? Seeing none, we shall come directly to a vote. Would all those in favor, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. The motion passes, majority, unanimous affirmative vote. Article 37.
Yes, Madam Moderator, I move in terms of the article.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
Yes, this is a result of the recent Municipal Modernization Act, as amended in Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 57, which deletes the one-year requirement for payments of delinquency before municipality may deny, suspend, revoke, or not renew certain licenses and permits. It allows for the municipality, through bylaw or ordinance, to define its own grace period for certain payment delinquencies.
certain payment delinquencies. This change would reduce the town's grace period from one year as defined period for the, in the pre- amended statute to 60 days, which is the optional timeframe the town is seeking.
Any further discussion on Article 37? The motion under Article 37? Seeing none, we shall come directly to a vote. Would all those in favor of the motion, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. The motion passes, majority affirmative vote. Article 38. Mr. Foster.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I moved in terms of the article.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded, you may speak to it.
The town originally accepted the provisions of MGL, Chapter 32B, Section 20, with a favorable vote of Article Number 21 at the April 28, 2009 annual town meeting. As it currently stands, the fund has been determined to be a reserve fund, excuse me, for retiree health insurance expenses, but is subject to town meeting appropriating these funds for any municipal purpose at any time. The provisions of this statute were recently modified in the Governor's Municipal Modernization Act and must be re-accepted to take advantage of the revision, which includes compliance with the standards of the government's Accountability Standards Board and Internal Revenue Service, which truly makes this a trust fund to be used only for retirees and their dependents' benefits. Additionally, the town will need to appoint a trustee or trustees who will have investment authority over the trust assets.
Any further discussion on Article 38? The motion. Seeing none, we shall come directly to a vote. Would all those in favor of the motion under Article 38, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. The, the motion passes, majority affirmative vote. Article 39.
I move in terms of the article.
Motion's been made and seconded. This is Susan Chauquette, you may speak to it.
Thank you. Tonight, we have an important opportunity to weigh in on an issue of both local and national importance, the corrupting influence of big money in politics. The focus of this effort is to clearly inform our legislators here at home and in Washington that the influence of big money on our elections and in our government is unacceptable. This influence comes from lobbyists, large corporations, and wealthy individuals with vested interests in political outcomes, who believe that their voices deserve to be heard above the rest of us. To this end, I have submitted a citizen's petition asking for a vote on an anti-corruption resolution sponsored by the nonprofit, nonpartisan group called Represent Us. This resolution is being proposed in town meetings across the state, and it has already passed in many towns in western Massachusetts. We have seen time and again how corporate interests and profits have taken precedence over the interests and needs of the people and our planet. Our elected officials are free to accept legalized bribes and are often encouraged to do so. In a quid pro quo, these payments are intended to purchase a desired outcome of an election or legislation. Also, many elected officials are hired as lobbyists when their terms are over with a minimal cooling-off period, thus creating a revolving door between big money influence and Congress. The passage of Citizens United opened these floodgates even wider. This is not a partisan issue. This corruption happens daily on both sides of the aisle. The Center for Public Integrity publishes a report that ranks each state in terms of their transparency and accountability across 13 categories. Based on the 2015 report, our state of Massachusetts earned an overall rating of a D-plus. Sadly, that ranks us 11th out of the 50 states. Our worst categories were related to transparency, disclosure, and judicial accountability. I truly believe in the phrase that change does not happen from the top down. Change always happens from the bottom up. This type of change needs to start at the local and state level. Although this resolution will not in any way change the way that Long Meadow holds elections or operates in any way, it puts Long Meadow on record as supporting this very important effort. The adoption of this resolution will encourage our legislators to support, sponsor, and co-sponsor anti-corruption legislation. Massachusetts has always been a leader in progressive change. Let's take the first step in setting the bar for other states to follow. Please vote yes on adopting this important resolution. Thank you.
Any discussion on Article, the motion under Article 39?
My name is Dean Roganis, Number 22, Laurin Terrace. I take issue with a lot of the things that you see in this article in the warrant. Anybody who's ever run for office, whether it be at the state level or in fact at the local office, knows what one has to go through when one raises money. We have a transparent system in Massachusetts. We have an Office of Campaign Finance-
Excuse me, let me interrupt-
Reports must be filed.
Sir, are you asking a question? Or making a motion or?
I understood the person who moved to say that corporations are able to donate. That is not true. I don't believe in Massachusetts and I wonder what you base that on.
Thank you. You may-
I don't really understand the question.
He's asking, he's, he's saying that he doesn't believe that corporations are able to donate and wonders what you're basing that assertion on.
Go ahead. It also addresses, I believe, you know, super PAC funding and, and things like that. I'm, I'm not totally sure how to address your question.
I can tell you that corporations are barred in Massachusetts from making contributions. I would like to ask you about the contribution that may be made by in fact a lobbyist. Can you tell me about that?
I, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't understand what you're asking me.
Does Massachusetts have limits on contributions that can't be made by-
Yes, there are limits-
Lobbyists.
Excuse me. We're not going to have a back and forth if you can ask all your questions and then answer. Please, Ms. Chauquette?
You want me to answer that?
Go ahead.
Yes, there are limits. Correct.
Okay, there's a limit of $200 for a lobbyist, which is not going to break the bank and is not going to corrupt most people. Can I ask you what you are talking about in your article about a tax credit for people who make contributions?
This resolution is a standard resolution sponsored by this nonpartisan, nonprofit group, Represent Us. I am presenting that resolution tonight. This was, it's a nationwide resolution and they're asking people to propose it throughout the state.
Are you planning-
All right, excuse me. Our bylaws permit people to speak three times. If a person would like to speak a fourth time, they must have the leave of the meeting. And so if you would like to speak a fourth time, Mr. Roganis, I will have to put it to a vote.
Okay, I would like, I would like to be able to speak to the article and not just ask questions. It seems to me that's fair.
You, you have to understand, however, our bylaw permits somebody who has spoken three times, that that's the limit, that somebody may speak.
How does one speak to an article if one is limited only to asking questions?
You may ask all of the questions in one turn and then in a subsequent turn, make your argument for or against the motion.
So I will still have an opportunity to speak to the article?
You have spoken three times now. And so if you wish to speak a fourth time, I will have to ask the meeting for their permission to grant you.
Okay. Well, I would just like to close by saying Massachusetts has-
Sir, sir, you're speaking?
-strict system and transparent system.
Thank you. If you would like to speak, I will have to put it to a vote. You do not wish to speak? I recognize the woman in the green microphone.
Jackie Nyman, 61 Ellington Street in Long Meadow. So I just, as a point of support and clarification, my understanding of this bill is that this is a, to put us in on record as supporting positive voter, I can't think of the word right now, but to make sure that we are transparent in a nationwide effort to do this and that this changes nothing about the way we are operating as a town, that we may be one town that does things properly, I'm not arguing that one way or the other, but this is a show of support for this on a grander scale. So my thought is if this doesn't change anything in any negative way and yet shows support for something that obviously is a nonpartisan issue, I see no reason to not support this.
May I please ask a question?
Oh, you may ask a question of procedure. Yes, sir.
Okay, yes, may I ask the last speaker? Are you aware of the transparency that exists in Massachusetts?
Sir, if you're asking the question about the content, I will have to put it to a vote. It's a simple matter. Would, sorry. Would all those in favor of allowing the speaker who seeks recognition, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your blue cards? The majority has it. You may speak one more time, Mr. Roganis.
Okay, may I speak? Massachusetts has a very comprehensive campaign finance law. It restricts lobbyists, it bans corporations from making donations, it limits the amount of any amount that may be given by individuals, it limits the amounts that may given by, that may be, that may also be given by in fact lobbyists. Anybody who has run for office or has helped somebody run for office knows that there are several campaign finance reports that have to be filed with an office that has been in fact established by Massachusetts. It is the Office of Campaign Finance. This is an office that is very strict. They enforce the law. From time to time, you'll see a story in the paper of a legislator who has been charged with crimes of taking money that do, that do violate the law. All of the campaign finance reports are filed by the Office of Campaign Finance. They are online, they may be viewed by anybody. You will see that they are, they, they in fact appear in lots and lots of detail. If you make a campaign donation above a certain amount, that would be about probably close to $50.01, your name will appear in there as well as occupation. What, what we are asking here is to put a layer of things on people that run for office. It is hard enough to get people to run for office today. You would be amazed at the amount of detail that a person who runs for office has to put forth in order to do this. And this would also include in fact the moderator that we see tonight. I think she knows what she has to go through in fact run for office. We want to encourage, we don't want to in fact restrict. When it comes to giving tax credits, stop and think, our state of Massachusetts right now is very short in its budget. It's going to have a very strict budget this year and will have to cut. When you're talking tax credits, you are talking about taking money out of the pocket of our state. It is going to take money out of local aid, school aid, so on and so forth. And the same is true of the federal government, which is also completely underwater. So it isn't simply a matter of standing for something that is good, it's a matter of what is good public policy. And I would argue, and just close by saying, Massachusetts has a very good statute. I don't think it's a D-plus. I've had to file those reports. Everybody who's been involved in a town committee has had to file them. Everybody who has run for office has had to file them. And it is not a simple system. It is something that works and I would ask everybody here to vote no. Thank you very much.
Further discussion?
I'd just like to respond to that of, a few things. First of all, just with regard to the rating, the center, I'm sorry, I want to say it right, the Center for Public Integrity, the D-plus was not my rating, this was the formal rating from the Center of Public Integrity's report. And you can go on their website and it lists out for each of the 13 categories, several subcategories and all the detail, you can see what the rating was and numerical value for each of the points. But I just want to clarify, this is not a resolution that changes any laws. This is a non-binding resolution that, that formally states that the town of Long Meadow supports legislation that prohibits big money influence in politics. And the outcome of this, if it's passed, is that a certified copy of this resolution from the town, along with the, the certified resolutions from the other towns that have passed it, will be sent to our state and federal representatives to encourage them to propose legislation. And that legislation will be fully debated in the House and the Senate at the state and the federal level. This has, this is no, I'm not proposing any law change. What I'm asking is that the town of Long Meadow formally state their support by passing this non-binding resolution. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we shall come directly to a vote on the motion under Article 39. Would all those in favor, please, this requires a simple majority. Would all those in favor, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your blue cards? The motion passes, majority affirmative vote. Mr. Kennedy?
Madam Moderator, I'm Steve Kennedy of Love and Western Drive. I'm the lead petitioner for Article 40. Subsequent to my filing this with the town, the-
Excuse me, Mr. Kennedy, can you make a motion first?
Yeah, I'm going to withdraw this and I'd just like to explain why.
Well, you can make the motion to take no action and then you can speak.
I'd like to make a motion to, to take no action.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded, now you may speak.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Subject, subsequent to my filing this with the town, the town manager brought to my attention that there's about three years down the road, a transportation or traffic improvement plan, which is currently under study and hopefully will be presented to the town about three years from now, which will resolve this situation as well as improve traffic flow in the north end of town on Long Meadow Street and Forest Glen and Western Drive. So I don't want to take any, I don't want to spend $25,000 right now because the money that's been coming into the town from MGM is going to be in part used for this project when it happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Then we shall come directly to a vote on a motion to take no act. There is a speaker.
Stephanie Jasmine, 123 Englewood Road. I'd like to ask if there is actually a plan to have that intersection? Is there something concrete in place that that intersection will be addressed? And I ask this because I was actually witness to a pedestrian being struck and I've been asking for years about, at that intersection. And I've been asking for years whether that intersection was going to be corrected because as it stands right now, there is a button that says to press to cross, there's no actual crossing light. So I just wanted to hear what the actual plan is for that area.
Mr. Crane?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Yes, there is a specific design underway. The intersection has more problems for pedestrians than just the signals. There are, there's geometry issues and so even adding a signal doesn't necessarily make it that much safer. In Article 30, the first one we did tonight about transferring the money, it mentioned the Long Meadow Converse Street. There really is three intersect, four intersections that are a part of that project. That's the upfront funding project from MGM. It is Forest Glen Converse and then Laurel and Converse that are a part of a, it's a huge project. So this, and what I showed Steve is a, it's a complete reconstruction of that intersection is what's proposed. And I think we're gonna, we're also going to be looking to advance it through the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission Transportation Improvement Plan as well. Valley Planning Commission Transportation Improvement Plan as well.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Michael N. Calick, four fifty-eight Williams Street, does a motion to take no action require unanimous consent, number one, and number two, there is, I believe, a bylaw to the effect that town meeting must take action on all of the articles in the warrant, so I believe that a motion to take no action requires unanimous consent of the town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, I will refer to the bylaws, and town meeting time, give me one moment. To answer Mr. Calick's question, neither the town council nor I could find that section in the bylaw that he was referring to. In a pre-meeting discussion about this proposed motion, we had reviewed both town meeting time and the bylaws, and did not see any reason to disallow a motion to take no action. The issue is, once an article is on the warrant, it may not be removed, the town must do something with it. And so we can either move to take no action on it, or we can move to refer it to a committee, we must dispose of it in some way, and the motion to take no action on it is the simplest way to handle it, and that's what Mr. Kennedy did. In town meeting time, I did not see anywhere where it said that a motion to take no action requires a unanimous consent. If Mr. Calick knows of that particular section, I would urge him to come forward, otherwise we are, I'm going to permit a motion to take no action.
Okay.
Then we shall come directly to a vote on the motion to take no action on Article forty. Would all those in favor of the motion to take no action, please raise your blue cards? Thank you, would all those opposed to the motion, please raise your blue cards? The motion passes by unanimous affirmative vote. And thank you for your patience with this, folks, really appreciate it. We, it is now nine thirty-four, and I will be asking speakers to be as brief as possible, I would ask that main motions be no more than five minutes, and subsequent motion, subsequent speeches, no more than two minutes, please. This is Article forty-one. Are you the lead proponent, Mr. Mack?
Yes, I am.
Okay, could you come to the front microphone, please? Thank you.
Jim Mack, seventy-two Barrington Road. Madam Moderator, I move in terms of the article?
The motion has been made in terms of the article, is there a second? The motion has been made and seconded, you may speak to it, Mr. Mack.
I've lived in Long Meadow for twenty-eight years, and have not had any problems until two years ago.
You speak directly into the microphone, thank you.
I've lived in Long Meadow for twenty-eight years, and have not had any problems until two years ago. That is when I saw my neighbors walking around on their roof in protective moon suits, building beehives. They have created an ugly eyesore and a hazard to my family, friends, and visitors. I now have family, friends, and contractors who refuse to come to my home due to fear or allergies. First, I understand and support the importance and benefits of bees in our environment, just not fifteen feet from my front door. We are not able to enjoy outside of our home without being harassed by bees while mowing our lawn, washing our cars, or just standing outside. The bees hover around the doors and windows and cover my home, siding, windows, and cars with bee droppings. In 2015, I went to Paul Haley, the building commissioner, for assistance, and he told me he could not help. I went to Beverly Herschorn, the health director, and she told me she could not help. I have since learned that there are no laws, rules, or regulations to protect the residents of Long Meadow, so I took on the matter. There seems to be a lot of focus only on the bees, however, Article forty-one also addresses the fact that there is no protection from having goats, pigs, chickens, or roosters next to your homes. In my research of bees, I've learned that a hive can hold up to seventy thousand bees per hive, and with a proposed minimum of three bees or more per residence, that's at least two hundred and ten thousand bees next to your home. These bees search for food and can travel up to three miles, the size of Long Meadow. They also need a lot of water, so they'll be seeking pools, hot tubs, and ponds. Now, you're going to be hearing a lot from the pro-bee people tonight, who belong to special groups and organizations, unfortunately, there are no anti-bee groups. I'd be cautious about what you hear they say. They will tell you that they are safe and harmless, yet they wear protective moon suits and need to protect against bee swarms. They will act like I'm taking away the sun, or I called their baby ugly, but I just want to restrict livestock, poultry, and bees to an appropriate large, open space, like our agricultural zone, not a fifty-by-hundred lot in a residential neighborhood. They will tell you they're doing everything right, however, they are only concerned in speaking for themselves, not you. Well, I'm speaking for you and your families. These beehives are an eyesore and a hazard, they do not conform with the rest of the neighborhood. These hives will reduce your property value and deter families from purchasing your home. If you want to protect your family and property from eyesores, hazards, and property degradation, please vote yes on Article forty-one, and let common sense prevail.
Thank you, is there a planning board recommendation?
Yes, I'm Bruce Colton, I'm the chairman of the planning board, I live at ninety-one Whitman Road. By unanimous vote of five to nothing, the planning board recommends that the town meeting vote down this proposed zoning bylaw amendment. As written, the proposed bylaw would not fit into our current zoning bylaws, but the board's recommendation goes through the amendment's substance, not its form. Our current zoning bylaws allow cats and dogs in the residential zone. The keeping of other domestic fowl and domestic animals is allowed through a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. These same rules currently apply in the agricultural zone, with the exception that horses, cows, and sheep are explicitly allowed in the zone, and no special permit from the zoning board of appeals is necessary for the keeping of other domestic fowl and animals. The proposed bylaw, with the exception of cats and dogs, would essentially institute a ban on the keeping of domestic animals in the residential zone. This appears to be both overbroad and unnecessary. While numerous animals are listed in this proposed bylaw, the focus, both pro and con, seems to be entirely upon honeybees. It is particularly ironic that prior to the filing of this amendment, the town's Board of Health was in the process of preparing comprehensive regulations for beekeeping in Long Meadow. The process was put on hold until this article could be acted upon by the town meeting, because if it passes, no regulation will be needed. The planning board feels that it's better to keep our animal bylaws as they are, and let the placement of domestic animals be regulated through the special permit process of the zoning board of appeals, and through safety regulations from the board of health. We urge you to vote no on this article.
Thank you, we shall now turn to the floor.
Mark, Madam Moderator, Mark Lanzakis, forty-five Whitman Road, I motion to amend the article as written to remove the word bees as on the warrant.
Do you have that in writing?
I do.
Could you please bring it forward?
I will.
Okay, the new article as, the new motion as amended would read, I move to see if the town will vote to, says, "A person shall not keep, maintain, or permit upon any lot or parcel within the town of Long Meadow livestock to include goats, sheep, and pigs, poultry, to include turkeys, chickens, roosters, ducks, and geese, with the exception that the lot or parcel is zoned agricultural, or take any other action relative thereto." So again, the only word that is struck out from this proposed amendment is the word bees. You may speak to, excuse me, has the, is there a second of the motion? Motion has, the motion to amend has been made and seconded, you may speak to it, Mr. Lanzakis.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Again, my name is Mark Lanzakis, I live at forty-five Whitman Road. I moved here with my parents in nineteen sixty-five, so I'm a longtime resident, my parents still live here, are in attendance this evening. I raised with my wife three children, K through twelve, which makes me think I understand the values and character of this town. The amendment as written is not in keeping with the character and values of the town of Long Meadow. We have, over the last few years, experienced significant honeybee population declines, colony collapse disorder, we've seen, in New England, forty percent or more decreases in native and domesticated honeybees. The acceptable limit is about eighteen percent, and we're in the fifty percent range. Massachusetts has taken the lead and is encouraging honeybee keepers to maintain their hives and maintain their honeybee stocks to less than fifteen percent colony loss. So we've got a long way to go, and I personally experienced fifty percent colony loss with the two hives I have at my property. The problem has gotten so significant nationwide that the Obama administration in 2014 issued a memorandum to all the states to develop pollinator protection because of this issue. And, and just this year, about three weeks ago, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, taking the lead from that directive from the Obama administration, released a Pollinator Protection Plan, which addresses honeybees and other pollinators in the Commonwealth because of their importance. I'm just going to just paraphrase really fast, from the commissioner of the Ag Department. "I am confident that working with the many interested and involved stakeholders, and by educating the public at large, we will be able to provide support for pollination, pollinators throughout our Commonwealth." And I think Long Meadow has an opportunity to do that this evening. Let me just explain why ag zones are not the appropriate place for honeybees. Ag zones contain farmland, farmland, and farmers use pesticides and other chemicals, which are known detriments to honeybee stocks. There is also the real risk and experience of vandalism to hives that were located in the ag zone, which in and of itself could cause a board of health issue with beehives that are destroyed and not in a controlled environment. I don't think that's what we want, and effectively makes the risks to our citizens greater by putting them there than keeping them on property owned by the beekeeper. My own personal experience is different than Mr. Mack has described, and I've explained and I've expressed those differences to the planning board. I've got two hives located on the third of an acre, which is a typical parcel in town, I have an in-ground pool, I have a very large hardscaped area in backyard where we entertain often with families with children, and we've never had, and I've never had, a negative impact or interaction between any of my guests and the bees that are on my property. The bee flight, in fact, is directly over my pool, but bees are not interested in going into my pool, they're only interested in going to pollination sources and obtaining nectar and pollen. As far as wearing moon suits ever described, I was on video and I was on TV, standing next to my hives without any protection whatsoever. I routinely go into my hives without the use of any gloves or protection on my hands, I can manipulate my bees without any gloves, I've even fed honeybees sugar water off my fingers. So again, my own experience and the experience of the other beekeepers that I've associated with is not consistent with what was described here tonight. As mentioned by Mr. Col, and we have been working with the board of health, and I want to thank Beverly and the rest of the members of the board of health for working with us to crafting regulations. We think it's important for not only the beekeeper, but for the residents of town to have established regulations for beekeeping. The regulations that we've crafted, although not approved by the board of health, the ones that we proposed, are consistent with the Massachusetts best beekeeping practices, which are referenced in the Pollinator Protection Plan that was released by the governor and the legislature. We believe that it appropriately harmonizes the needs of the beekeeper and the members of the community that are in and around beehives. I've got neighbors, in fact, that didn't realize I had a beehive until just recently, even as of latest tonight. So that's, that's the experience that I happen to have with my beehives. In the past two years, there's been no documented cases of anaphylaxis calls through emergency services due to bee stings. As mentioned, bees do travel up to three miles away, which means beehives that are kept in Enfield or kept in East Long Meadow, those bees are probably coming and foraging for food and nectar sources here in town, which is a good thing for people that have flowers and gardens for vegetables, and apples, and fruit trees. I'm almost done. I would argue that people in town have a higher risk with certain dog breeds, with inadvertent peanut allergies in schools, and with Lyme disease in town than they do with beehives. I think it's important that people make an informed decision about what's best for this town with regard to beekeeping. There were assertions made in the press with regard to the situation that was described by the petitioner of forty-one, with regard to how many hives, fifteen discussed, there's only three, we would never allow fifteen hives anywhere on the property, anywhere in town, through these regulations. The folks on Barrington Road that have beehives have had contractors at their facility, at their house, doing work without any issue, they've even had conversations, I'm told and understand, with contractors that have done work at the Barrington Road facility. And you can, as far as being empathetic, there are two stories to every story, and I'll just quickly cut it right here.
You're at the sixth minute, so...
Okay, that's good for me.
Thirty seconds, keep going.
The assertion that Mr. Mack's family members are allergic to bees, and have to carry it depends, his wife and children, I would just, I would just ask Mr. Mack to explain if he is, in fact, married and has any children, because that's, I think, verifiably false.
Sorry, that's not appropriate, thank you.
You're welcome.
We shall move on to the discussion, any, anyone else wish to discuss, Ms. Herschorn?
Good evening, I'm Beverly Herschorn, I'm the health director for the town. Dr. Rappaport, who is the chair of the board of health, unfortunately was not able to be in town this evening due to a personal matter, but he has asked me to give the following information to the members of town meeting. The board of health has been pursuant to Mass General laws, has been given the authority to primogate regulations to preserve and protect the public health. The board has, for a number of months, has been working on regulations to restrict beekeeping in residential, on residential property, and we have used as a basis of these, of drafting these regulations, both the guidelines of the Mass Department of Agricultural Resources, as well as an exhaustive search of both Massachusetts local regulations and regulations out of state. It's been a long process, and we've tried to... It's been a long process, and we've tried to bring in stakeholders from both sides, and we've also had the state apiary expert, Kim Skirm, I don't know if she's here this evening, but she has also provided guidance to us as this whole subject area was rather new to us. I, I just wanted to inform the participants in town meeting that at the last meeting of the board of health, the board voted to neither take a position of supporting or opposing either Article 41 or a follow-up or an additional Article 44, which is somewhat on the same subject matter. And the reason, there was very clear reasons in the discussion. The minutes of that meeting have not been approved yet, and Dr. Rappaport wanted to clarify why there was no position for, for or against these articles. First is, I think the board was very interested in hearing of the viewpoints of the citizens at large who might be here at town meeting, rather than just the few people that tended to come to our meeting. So it gives us a, some more opinions which we can use in drafting and thinking about how to draft our regulations. Second of all, Article 41, the way it was presented to town meeting before the amendment would make our regulations moot, so there was no real point to take position for or against Article 41.
Thank you. Yes, sir. For a question or a motion, or you're going to speak up? In opposition to the motion to amend?
Yes. So my name's Sean Miller. I live on 60 Barrington Road, right next to the house that you saw up on the screen there, and we've been there for eighteen years. I've been there for eighteen years with my wife. We've raised three kids. My youngest is thirteen right now. Absolutely no problems with the bees at all. We don't even know they're there most of the time unless we walk by and look up at the house, so.
So this is about a motion to amend to withdraw the word bees from the proposed bylaw? It's late, it's all right. Your comment still stands. Was there anything you wanted to add?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
The only other thing I would throw in there is, as you can tell, I'm not a bee expert, so, just a common person, the bees are fine. They don't bother any of us.
Thank you. So this is a, okay, got it. Again, on the motion to amend.
I'm Elizabeth S. Kennedy. I live at 11 Western Drive. I've lived there for twenty years. I would like to speak in favor of the motion to remove the word bees from this article. On my property, I have three blueberry bushes, which produce approximately sixty pounds of blueberries a year as a result of the action of bees, which I do permit on my property. I also grow many tomatoes, green beans, and many other food sources. I feel this is a good ecological use of my property. This article as it written, as it's written, would forbid me from permitting bees on my property. So I hope that is not the intent to forbid gardening in Long Meadow. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion to amend?
Jerry Nolett, 724 Frank Smith Road. A bit of a beekeeping lesson. I've been Long Meadow beekeeper for forty-plus years. I've been a member of the Hampden Beekeepers Association and followed best practices issued by the state of Massachusetts. Honeybees by nature, unlike hornets or white-faced yellow jackets, do not attack, but defend. You can stand by my hive all day, not a problem. You kick the hive, they're coming after you. Only one bee sting has been reported to the board of health. Hives have been kept in my backyard for all these years, except for placing them in the meadows, which is our agricultural zone, but they were unfortunately vandalized two years ago. No one has been stung by my honeybees. This article would only allow beekeeping west of the Interstate 91, the agricultural zone. It's in direct conflict with what is being done nationally, so I support the amendment that let's be more peaceful with the bees. They are our three things that we eat. Thirty percent of what we eat is pollinated by those bees, and I think we need it, we need them in Long Meadow, and six or eight residents who live in Long Meadow keep bees, and there has been those stings. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no one else who wishes to speak, we shall come directly to a vote on the motion to amend. The motion to amend the article removes the word bees from the warrant article in Article Would all those, it requires a simple majority. Would all those in favor, yes, the motion to amend requires a simple majority. Would all those in favor of the motion to amend, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed to the motion to amend, please raise your blue cards? The motion to amend passes by majority affirmative vote. We shall now come to a discussion on the motion as amended.
I'd just like to suggest that with removal of that word, that.
Steven Metz?
I'm sorry, sorry.
It's all right.
Steven Metz, 171 Compteur Lane. That the rest of the, the proposed article is pretty superfluous.
Yes, sir?
Andrew Berkey, 32 Wilson Drive. Notwithstanding the removal of the word bees, I find the, the motion itself still putative, and so I will be voting against it on that ground alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Scott Soars, 39 Albemarle Road. As former commissioner of agriculture for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and former state director for USDA rural development, first want to applaud the planning commission in the town for taking the foresight to actually develop language for zoning of agricultural zones. I think that's a great step that actually many communities across the Commonwealth have done. In fact, I would encourage you to go one step further and look at creating a right-to-farm bylaw for the Commonwealth, for, for the town as well. But with that in mind, and with the increased demands for folks to consume local agricultural products, including honey, I agree with the previous speakers that oppose this amendment, primarily because there's already zoning bylaws that are set up to encourage agriculture, and I would submit that by limiting the agriculture, actually limiting the opportunities for the community to access safer local food products. And I would quote Wendell Berry by saying, for any of you know him, that eating is an agricultural act, and I think we all need to be a part of whatever we can do to produce our own food systems and our own food supplies, including these. So again, I would oppose and encourage the, the town to oppose this bylaw even as it's amended form. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Good evening. Walter Gunn, 1579 Long Meadow Street, Long Meadow Planning Board. Before we hear what Dr. Metz just said, that it's superfluous, I do want to point out that if you listen to Mr. Colton's recommendation tonight, what's happening here with this amendment for anybody who lives in the agricultural zone, we're making the use of farm animals actually more liberal, more permissive. Right now, what's permitted in the agricultural zone is horses, cows, and sheep. Residential zone, as we know, is poultry, and that's, and that's by special permit, which is granted through the ZBA, which also is regulated currently by the board of health. What you're going to get, and I can exaggerate, but you could get in the agricultural zone if you pass this article is industrial pig farms. Right now, we don't permit pigs anywhere in Long Meadow, for example. This actually makes the use of the agricultural zone for livestock more liberal, so I want everybody to take that for, into, into mind. And additionally, I will say one more time, board of health, and you just heard it from Beverly Herschorn, is working very diligently to regulate for the best interests of the community and for the agricultural interests that the state and, and beekeepers want to see. So everything, I think the board of health is really the way to go, and the ZBA is also a good regulatory body. Thank you. So I would recommend a vote against Article 41 as amended.
Thank you. Seeing no other people who wish to speak, we shall come directly to a vote on the motion as amended. This motion requires a two-thirds vote. Would all those in favor of the motion, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed to the motion, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. The motion fails by declaration to, two-thirds. Mr. Harbison?
Bill Harbison, 217 Farmington Road. Madam Moderator, I move in terms of the article.
Motion has been made and seconded? Can I speak to it?
Madam Moderator, I now move to make a simple amendment to the article.
Okay. Make the motion, please.
Make a motion to make a simple amendment to the article.
And what, say, say what the amendment is, I'm sorry.
Excuse me?
Say what kind of amendment you're going to offer.
You want me to read the amendment?
Yes, please.
Okay. I thought you were going to.
Will you? You say what you want to do?
Basically, Article 42.
Say, I want to, I want to remove, say, excuse me.
All right.
You're going to say, you're going to say, I need to remove these words from the article.
If you look in line five of your, of your article.
Sir, sir, one more time. Say, I move to amend the motion by removing, and then say the words that you want to.
I move to amend the motion by removing the following words in the article. So much of, and then that has not been improved as a playground.
Thank you. Is there a second for that motion? The motion to amend has been made and seconded.
I'm sorry for the confusion.
That's okay.
Can I speak to the?
Yes, you may now speak to the motion to amend.
So the purpose of Article 42 tonight is to give some added protection to Bliss and Laurel Parks under Article 97 of the state of Massachusetts. Now, the Article 97 was approved in 1972 to be a legislative check to ensure that lands acquired for conservation purposes were not converted to other inconsistent uses. Bliss Park and Laurel Parks lands were acquired in 1934, actually, and were voted at a town meeting to be used as public parks and playgrounds, and I'm sure you know as well that they were designed by the Olmsted firm. Now, the reasons for making the amendment to the article are as follows. While when our group, that we call ourselves the Long Meadow Citizens to preserve our parks, when our group was initially drafting the article for the town meeting, we were advised and were under the impression that the playground area was protected under a different statute, so we separated that piece out of the warrant. So the current warrant reads to designate Laurel Park and so much of Bliss Park that has not been improved as a playground to be protected under Article 97. Now subsequently, after more extensive research, we found that the case laws dealing with playgrounds, whether or not they are protected or whether they can be included in Article 97, is vague and poorly defined at best. Further, there was concern on our part as to what was the definition of playground as it pertained to Bliss Park. A, does it refer to just the playground itself, which is where the swing sets are? B, does it refer to the playground and tennis courts, or the playground, tennis courts, and pool, or the playground, tennis courts, and all the playing fields? It was unclear. As you can see, I think from one of the slides, we had a drone picture of Bliss Park, yes, on the upper right, you can see that potentially we're talking about a fairly large area, if, depending on what your definition of playground is. So as you can see from the slide, we are talking about a very large area. In addition, all of the improvements, which have been clearly enhanced the enjoyment of the parks by all of our citizens, all of these improvements were added many years after Bliss and Laurel Park were functioning normally as public parks and playgrounds, quote unquote, for public recreation and enjoyment of nature, as expressed by the voters in Long Meadow at the town meeting in 1934. Article 97 was approved in 1972 and is designed to be a legislative check to ensure that lands acquired for conservation purposes are not converted to other inconsistent uses. In summary, our group, Long Meadow Citizens to Preserve Our Parks, feel strongly that all, all of Bliss Park and all of Laurel Park should be included under Article 97. To leave quotes, so much of Bliss Park that has not been improved as a playground, end quotes, as the article currently stands, makes no sense and would potentially expose a large area of Bliss Park to future development, which would defeat the purpose of the article in the first place. Therefore, the amended article should read, quote, "And accordingly therefore to designate Laurel Park and Bliss Park for the purpose of conserving, utilizing, and protecting for the public the forest, water, air, and other natural resources attributable to those lands and contained therein and/or upon them." So please vote yes for the amendment and yes for the amended Article 42 to preserve all of Bliss and Laurel Parks for future generations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any recommendations? Then it's open to the floor. Any discussion on the art, the motion to amend? Seeing none, we shall come directly to a vote on the motion to amend. The motion, the motion to amend requires a simple majority. Would all those in favor of the motion to amend, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed to the motion to amend, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. The motion to amend passes by majority affirmative vote. We now come to discussion of the motion as amended. Any discussion? Seeing none, we shall come directly to a vote. Yes, there's two. Could you turn the lights back on, please? While people are walking around. Yes, sir.
Madam Moderator, thank you. I, my name's Dave Rothschild. I live at 160 West Morland Avenue, and I have lived there with my family for thirty-four years, and we back up to Laurel Park. When we bought our house in 1982, there were several people that told us Laurel Park was conservation land, would be protected and never built upon, and we've seen a couple of things in the last couple of years where there's been a lot of discussion about possibly building a senior center or a DPW in Laurel Park, which we don't like, and we think it's due to lack of documentation that says what Laurel Park is, that it really is a park and is protected. I think a lot of research and digging has been done, and they can't find a valid deed other than that the town owns the, the property. There's a long history to, to that Laurel Park. It was, like Bill said, it was voted upon in 1934 to be a park. Also in that year, the Olmsted brothers were hired by the town, and for those people that don't know who the Olmsted brothers are, they were the premier public park architects in the world. They designed Forest Park in Springfield, Boston Garden, Central Park in New York, Yosemite Village in California, and the town of Long Meadow hired them to design and construct Laurel Park. It was clear they wanted the best for the citizens here in town. Although it wasn't finished, we can go in there and we can see what was done. The pond that we see from Laurel Park, the dam, the bridge, the way Cooley Brook now flows, was all done under that contract before it was canceled. The park has been. The park has been recognized. It, it's on the National Historic Registry, um, I said that wrong, National Registry of Historic Places. It's a part of National Park Service. It's a beautiful little park and should be protected. But more important, our families and our kids have played in that park through the last eighty-five years. It was the town's swimming hole before Bliss Park, before Bliss Pool was built. The town stopped the pond there for years to have a fishing derby for the kids. And even today, people are in there on a daily basis, riding their bikes through the trails, walking their dogs, having picnics. Just a couple of weeks ago, I saw young men in there photographing nature. And, um, we want to preserve the park and what we're asking for with this article is just to have the town prepare legal documents to ensure it stays a park as it was originally planned.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Madam Moderator, I'm Steve Kennedy of eleven Western Drive, and I'm, I'm, I'm rising against the, the petition as written because of a number of things, that, of the terminology that is used. It says where and said land was intended to be transferred from the water department to the care and control of the park commissioners. Intended to me means it didn't happen. So I, I'm, I'm not yet, I'm not yet completed with this. And I look further on to say that both Laurel and Bliss will be used for park and conservation purposes. And I just wanted to point out that twenty-five years ago, when we lived in Wilbraham, we dealt with Fountain Park being given to the, uh, to the town of Wilbraham by Larry Fountain, owner of Fountain Plating in West Springfield. Big to-do at the time at town meeting because it was, uh, it was stated that park and conservation are incompatible with each other. Conservation basically is land that is left to, uh, go free, go back to nature. That's conservation property. Park property is property which is improved upon and made available for use by the, the citizen tree. So I, as, as this is written, I don't see that it can be both a park and conservation property at the same time. And that's why I'll vote no against this.
At the yellow microphone, and you'll get to speak after us.
Barbara Wenig, one-thirty-nine Maple Road. I'm just curious why other parks in towns such as Greenwood and Turner Park are not included in this article?
Mr. Harbison, can you address that question?
I, I don't know why Greenwood was not in, included. I, my impression was that the, that the Senior Center was going to be built there, um, so we did not include that. And in terms of, what was the second question?
Turner Park.
Turner Park, from what I understood, was, is not actually a, a park, right? And that was a... And, um, then can I just address the other, uh, uh, Mr. Kennedy's question? Uh, I, I will say that in nineteen seventy-three, there was an opinion by the Attorney General called the Quinn Opinion. Um, and they were talking about which, uh, what, what could be included in Article ninety-seven. And, um, I'll just quote from that. It says, quotes, "While small greens remaining as the result of constructing public highways may be excluded, it is suggested that parks, monuments, reservations, athletic fields, concert areas, and playgrounds clearly qualify." So-
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, I, I don't really have a specific question, but I-
Mary Beth Bergeron.
Yes, Mary Beth Bergeron, four-ninety-seven Inverness Lane. I don't really have a specific question, but I would like to fill in some of the gaps. Um, I did extensive research on Bliss and Laurel Parks, uh, when I was investigating the land for the senior center. And just so to have the, the background on the history of it, the property was originally acquired from the original deed from the city of Springfield when they did-
Ms. Bergeron, are you asking a question?
No, that's what I said. Just one, I wanted to clarify some information, that's all.
Okay, that, that microphone is usually just for, for questions.
Okay, where would you like me? I'm not against and I'm not for. I'm just in the middle.
As long as that's clear to everyone here.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So the law, the land itself was part of the parcel, the large acreage that was deeded to the town of Long Meadow and the original pension deed to Springfield, to Long Meadow, when it was incorporated. And that land was known as the Water Works Land because the watershed came down to Cooley's Brook. It was called at that time Cooley's Brook because there was a land, a, a house on the corner there and the land was owned by him, not owned by him, but that parcel was owned by him. Um, subsequently-
One moment, Ms. Bergeron.
Yep.
The town council needs to issue an opinion on something.
Sure. Thank you, but that, that's not a correct recounting of the facts. I've had to look into this probably more than anybody in town, other than the, the petitioners on this. And, uh, the Water Works were, were ta, were a, a set of takings that was authorized by special legislation. That's why if you go to the old nineteen twelve atlas, you see how precisely the lines are laid out. So it was not part of the pension deed. These were homesteads that, portions of which were taken in order to form a water company. Uh, I'll be happy to share that research.
And then when, uh, in nineteen thirty-
If you'd like to ask a question, however-
Okay, no problem.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Cress?
Hi, uh, my name's Fran Cress. I live at ninety-nine Oxford Road. I am in favor of this article. I am a member of the Long Meadow Citizens to Save Our Parks. I think it would be helpful... Um, I think it would be helpful to understand history a little bit, and if I can quickly do that-
You have two minutes.
All right, we'll try and do it. Um, the, in nineteen thirty-four, the town transferred the land from the Water Works Department to the park commissioners. And then the town, um, meeting, at town meeting on February twenty-eighth in nineteen thirty-four unanimously approved that transfer for the use of that land as parkland hence forward. That was eighty-three years ago. Unfortunately, at the time, the town did not record that transfer and the use of the land as parkland. And consequently, it is no, it is not therefore governed under Article ninety-seven. The purpose of this article is to get that governed under Article ninety-seven. Any land that is, um, acquired for ninety-seven use is protected even if the reason for the acquisition is not recorded on a deed. Additionally, the Supreme Judicial Court has accepted an even broader view, allowing that land not originally purchased for an Article ninety-seven purpose, but subsequently dedicated to an Article ninety-seven use, um, is subject to Article ninety-seven with limitations. The limitation is that land originally acquired for non-Article ninety-seven purposes can be subject to Article ninety-seven protection, but the only circumstances by which such land can be considered for Article ninety-seven protection is where the restricted use has been reported on the deed through a conservation easement. So we qualify, in the fact that it was originally not for Article ninety-seven use, but was transferred with the intent, the problem is that we can't act on that intent, with the intent that it be parkland, we qualify, but we don't have the conservation easement that we should have. This article is intended to acquire that so that we can get Article ninety-seven protection, which does not mean that the land is in perpetuity parkland. What it simply means is that it requires both town votes and state legislative vote and oversight by and approval by the EOEA, which is the agency for Article ninety-seven, before it could possibly be developed.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Ellen Gold, one-twenty-nine Avondale Road. Um, I have a question, if this is going to affect any future changes that might be made to any of the things on the park? For example, if we want to enlarge the bathroom facilities at the pool, or enlarge the pool, or make another basketball court? Is this going to prevent or hold up any development like that?
And are all, uh, is that all your questions? Thank you. Uh, Mr. Harbison?
I don't think so. I think if, uh, if we were going to take the basketball court down, or there's no basketball court there right now, but there is actually. I was thinking of the volleyball court, which we don't have now, but there used to be. But I think if they're going to put a, a big, uh, structure up, uh, like a McDonald's or something, that's something different. But I think if we're going to add to this swimming pool, or add to the tennis courts, that would probably be perfectly fine under Article ninety-seven.
Any other discussion?
Hi, Pat Carnahan, uh, three-eleven Farmington Road. I'm in support of this article. Uh, we don't have a lot of parkland in town. As you've heard previously, our town is pretty much a hundred percent built out. What we have is what we have. Uh, parkland is valuable. It's scarce. Uh, Turner Park, somebody asked about Turner Park. It's not a park. It's just town property, surplus town property. Uh, they could put a McDonald's there with the proper, uh, vote on the town. It could be a condominium. It could be senior housing. It could be anything. We don't have a lot of parkland. We only have some. I'd like to see it protected under Article ninety-seven so that future development in the park, if it's so chosen, is done rationally, it's thoughtful. The entire town is a part of it. Doesn't mean it can't be developed, but it's protecting it as much as the state allows. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Emmanuel Wenig, one-thirty-nine Maple Road. I think that what the speaker just said before directly contradicts what the other lady said here in favor of the motion. The idea of this, uh, warrant is to stop any development without a great deal of, of legal effort. And it's, it, it began with the, uh, application to try to put the adult center there. Uh, this is just a local issue for these people because they didn't try to include any other parklands or anything else. But directly, what you were saying about allows other development, they are directly contradicts what this other lady said.
All right. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Dan Schwarting, five-sixty-one Long Meadow Street. Other speakers have said it already that our town is pretty much built out. It's a fact that's come up a lot in the last couple of nights. Uh, but I do think that having some natural land in town is very important, and I think the people of Long Meadow are very fortunate to have this here. For, for a lot of people in a lot of other towns, uh, to just get outside and enjoy nature a little bit, um, it might be a forty-five minute car ride to a state forest. For us right here in Long Meadow, this is a, a park that's within walking distance of a pretty good, uh, portion of the town's population. And, um, it really, even though it's not a lot of acreage compared to a, a larger state park, um, it doesn't, you don't have to go too far in, to, you know, in off the street to really feel like you're in nature and, uh, kind of remove yourself from the hustle and bustle of everyday life, if you will. So, um, I am strongly in support of this article.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm going to speak to the gentleman that just referred to, uh, what I spoke about originally.
Say your name again, please. Say your name. You, you, you bend it down. There you go.
All the way down.
Say your name again, please.
Um, Fran Cress, ninety-nine Oxford Road. Um, what is important to understand, and the gentleman is correct, we are trying to, um, limit development-
A little closer, right into the microphone.
...in this park for a re, for the reason that it, we want to retain it as parkland. And without Article ninety-seven, the park is basically, uh, the town's general corporate property. And as such, can be, still be considered for development without any added protection that's afforded through Article ninety-seven. And we saw that with regard to the senior center. We are against that kind of development in the park.
Thank you. Yes?
Craig Carr, three-nine-seven Long Meadow Street. Our parks, actually, one, one of the biggest assets, second, second to our schools, is the beauty of this, of this town. And to develop our parks, I feel, is really criminal. To put a building on a park, it's not just putting a building, because with the building comes the, um, relative amount of parking that you need, and then you have a building and you have the parking. You have a great big, uh, area of McAdam. With, with the parking lot comes the nighttime lighting. So the next thing you know, you don't have as much park anymore. And, and as has been said, we have a very limited amount of open space. It's, Bliss and Laurel are enjoyed by a number of people, a very large number of people, and it would be really criminal.
Thank you. Yes?
Cynthia Summer, fifty-seven Farmington Avenue. My house backs up onto Laurel Park. I do have a question. I, I have worked for a conservation organization, and it has been my experience that when you place a conservation restriction on something, at that time, um, you carve out the area, the natural areas as opposed to the developed areas usually. So, you know, developed areas being playground or, or whatever. And so, um, I know for a fact that, um, and, and this is leading up to a question. I know for a fact that, um, we had a, a property that had a conservation restriction on it, and because we had not in advance specified, um, we needed parking on it, they, it was a, a, a great deal of difficulty finding a place to site a parking, a limited parking area for people to visit that land. And so I, I really do want somebody to clarify, because I've heard two different things now. It, will the parks department have the flexibility and the, if they need to, like, move a parking lot or add to the pool building or something like that, will they be able to do that? It doesn't seem to me the way it's written that they would, because you, you took away that language about not being improved as a playground. I'm really confused.
All right. Is there someone who can answer that question? Mr. Crane?
We went through this on the Wolf Swamp Fields, if people may recall, and did a lot of research on Article ninety-seven. And there is, um, conservation restriction for conservation, and there's conservation restriction for recreation. And they're specific and, and different. And so if you have an area that's conserved for conservation, then you are restricted in what you can do. And so things like, I, I believe, because things like expanding a parking lot or building, uh, moving the pool or something would not be allowed. If you have it conserved for recreation, um, then that possibility may exist, um, but it's still, the Article ninety-seven is, is very limiting. And when you, it's a permanent restriction, and I think the big, what we ran into in Wolf Swamp is to take it out of Article ninety-seven, um, you need to find replication space, which in Long Meadow effectively makes it a permanent restriction on the property, um, that completely ties the town's hands for options. And so I, I don't have a position on the petition one way or, or the other, but it, you know, the town would not be able to find, I don't, I don't believe, replication space. Anything I want to clarify is that easily a third of our community is open space. I mean, I think when we talk about a lack of parkland, I do agree that in our kind of built-out neighborhoods is less parkland, but the meadows that we were just talking about in the previous article is entirely permanently preserved conservation land and open space. And I'm told by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, a gem for the region, in terms of bird watching and things like that. So I just want to make sure we're clear on how much open space we, we truly do have. And you're right, it is a, a great gift of the community.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Marsha Harbison. I live at two-one-seven Farmington Road, and I'm also part of the Long Meadow Citizens to Save Our Parks. I would just like to make a few comments. One, uh, lady wondered why we weren't saving all the parks. And originally, we did intend to do that when all of these buildings were being proposed. But then we came to the conclusion that each park that's so-called called a park, but the town doesn't recognize as parks, is quite different. And so we have just recently focused our attention on Bliss and Laurel, mainly because of the senior center building. And we were very successful last October twenty-fifth in squashing that development in the park. And the point of this article and this petition is just to have the town make a legal deed and register it so that it conforms with what the town voted for back in nineteen thirty-four. And I think that there's a lot of support of people in this town for the parks, and I urge you to vote yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Jacqueline Nyman, sixty-one Ellington Street. Um, just a point of clarification. I don't know if I'm just not smart enough to understand, or if it's just late. I don't know if I'm just not smart enough to understand or if it's just late. So if approving this article means that the future of development of whatever kind is not, would not happen, but saying no to having this article continued, Article 97 continued, means that the possibility of something developed at some point in that we can't conceive of, that that would possibly happen. But it doesn't necessarily mean that it will happen. Is that correct? In other words, if somebody wanted to, in fact, build a McDonald's behind Bliss Pool, we would be having a conversation about that at that time. Am I, is that correct?
That would be correct. Yeah. But I also want to point out, and I think it was pointed out before, that you said, you didn't say in perpetuity, but you said forever, that would be protected forever. It's not exactly true. Article 97 is not in perpetuity. There's ways you can disassociate yourself from Article 97, but it does require several steps that not only approval by the Conservation Commission and the Parks Department, but a two-thirds vote of the town, then it goes to the state legislature. It's got to be approved by the state legislature and then signed off by the governor. And so there's a lot of hoops that need to be taken, but if, for some reason, the town decided that they wanted to develop that park, and they were able to go through those hoops, it's not in perpetuity.
Thank you.
Are we ready to come to a vote? Okay. This is Article 42 as amended. Motion requires a simple majority vote. Would all those in favor of motion under Article 42 as it has been amended, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed to the motion, please raise your blue cards? The motion passes by majority affirmative vote. Mr. Marzak.
I'm moving in the terms of the article.
Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. The town meeting time holds that the moderator should advise the meeting of the possible consequences of an affirmative vote. The town council previews the warrant to see if there are any potential areas where the Attorney General, in the standard post-meeting review of actions, could have a cause to reject an affirmative action on any article due to a preemption challenge under state law. This article, 43, is one of those cases. Town meeting is free to disregard the council's opinion and express the sense of the meeting. Mr. Marzak, you may now speak to the motion.
Good evening. Second-to-last town warrant, so I'll be brief. This warrant is all about integrity. It will not add to your property taxes or to the town budget. All people are already in place to perform all tasks necessary to ensure voter registration at town hall and voting taking place at the community center. If you could scroll down or scroll up a little bit to the ID required. These are some of the items that require ID. Purchase of alcohol, purchase of cigarettes, open a bank account, apply for food stamps, apply for welfare, apply for Medicaid, apply for Social Security, enlist in the military, apply for a job, apply for unemployment, apply for a hunting and fishing license. The rest of the stuff is up there. You guys get the thing. You guys can read really well, so I'm going to skip that. I wanted to point out that 15 states already require voters to present a valid photo ID to vote. 15 states, so a little less than a third. I want to talk a little bit about registering to vote and my concerns. My son's turned 18. They were here at Long Meadow High School, and I, we've had the discussion with them that you have to join in government, you have to vote, and you have to register. So sent him down to town hall. They were not asked for a proof of ID. They were not asked for anything to prove they actually live here in Long Meadow. When my wife moved into Long Meadow, she also registered to vote, and she was not asked for any proof she actually lived here. Like I said, this gives me cause for concern. So I'm going to move on to my take on the current state of political parties. Both accuse each other of wrongdoing and deceitful practices. I say that we have to go beyond political parties and do what is right. We can make a difference, and I would rather lead than follow blindly. As for the statement that the moderator made about the review by the town council, I say to you, there's something really important here. It says, "The town meeting is free to disregard the council's opinion and express the sense of the meeting." Now, to that point, let us, let us get past our town and say, "We're going to vote for this, and we're going to let the Attorney General up in Boston make the call." Okay? Make her stop, hop up there and say, "You know what? I don't agree with this." And that's what, so I want to pass this. And I urge you to pass this article. And could you please scroll to the second page there, sir? The one thing that you don't have to do to, when you register to vote, there's no ID required. And I don't think this makes sense, and I don't think it passes the common sense test. So I urge you to vote to pass this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Any board recommendations, or we're going right to the floor? We're going right to the floor.
Louis Robin, 942 Long Meadow Street. I'd like to make a motion concerning this. Do you want a copy of it?
Please make the motion first.
I hereby move that warrant 43 be referred to a committee to review all voting registration, identification, and early voting issues. The committee shall be comprised of three members, one chosen by the select board, one chosen by the moderator, and one chosen by the petitioner of warrant 43. The committee shall report to the select board within 180 days of its first meeting. May I speak to this?
Hold on one second. Could you bring the motion forward, please? This is a motion to... Is there a second on this motion to commit or refer? The motion has been seconded. You may speak to the motion.
I actually find some favor in the provision to show IDs. However, I also think you should have certain elements such as allowing people to make provisional ballots if they don't have their ID at that particular moment. You should also allow people to be identified by the conscientious and impartial poll workers that are at the facilities during votes. And you should perhaps even allow, if someone accompanies a voter who doesn't have an ID, to attest to that person as long as that person who are testing has an ID. I also think we should have, we should broaden and extend our early voting, which I find a very useful function in our, in our state and our town. And I also think we should have same-day registration. And I think all these issues should be submitted to a committee to discuss it and submit it to the select board, their recommendations. And I also think we have a problem, perhaps if we voted in the wrong manner, that we incur legal expenses in defending it before the state. But I think that all should be put forth to a committee. Thank you.
All right. We are now discussing a motion to refer Article 43 to a committee. This motion is debatable. It requires a simple majority. Would anybody like to speak to the motion to refer? One voter.
Tom DiNazio, 24 Crescent Road. I'm against the motion to refer. I think this is a pretty straightforward issue that's been well documented, you know, throughout the, throughout the media, and I think we can handle an up and down vote on this tonight. Thanks.
Anyone else on the motion to refer? So this is not an amendment. So we are clear. The motion to refer takes the article out of town meeting and places it into a committee. And I will read the motion one more time. It is hereby moved that warrant Article number 43 be referred to a committee to review all voting registration, identification, and early voting issues. The committee shall be comprised of three members, one chosen by the select board, one chosen by the moderator, and one chosen by the petitioner of warrant 43. The committee shall report to the select board within 180 days of its first meeting. If we are ready to vote on the motion to refer? Nope, we have one more discussion.
Steve Kennedy of 11 Western Drive. I'm the Chair of the Registers of Voters for the Town of Long Meadow. The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts are clear regarding registration to vote. When you do register to vote, you have to put down either your S-number for your driver's license or the last four of your Social Security. Everybody who has ever registered in my presence has had to pull out their license. I don't, it says a Massachusetts license on it. I don't examine it, but I do get to look at it. So if, and, and when you do go to vote, you simply have to go to, as you did here, precinct A, B, C, D, E. Tell them what your, what your street is and your number, and they'll ask you your name. And that's good enough, and that's the law.
Mr. Kennedy, this is on the motion to refer.
I understand that.
Well, you need to speak to the motion to refer.
And I am against it, deferring or deferring to a motion to, to present something to the selectmen. I'm against it because the selectmen have no power whatsoever with, in this regard. So I think we're wasting our time on this.
All right. We shall come to a vote on a motion to refer to a committee. Would all those in favor of a motion to refer to the committee as has been specified, please raise their blue cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed to the motion to refer, please raise their blue cards? Thank you. The motion to refer fails by majority affirmative vote. We shall now come back to the main motion.
Sawyer Hicks, 122 Quintetuck Road. I can entirely understand how someone could look at this without context and think that it's a common sense idea, and I understand that argument. However, if you actually look into the implications of voter ID laws, it is very clear that these are tools of voter suppression. These have been used by state legislatures who benefit from depressed turnout and invariably disenfranchise often low-income people of color and older people who have not renewed their licenses. Voter fraud is virtually nonexistent in the United States. This may seem difficult to believe, but every credible study and audit of the democratic process in our country by Secretaries of State from both parties has shown that there are very few documented instances of voter fraud. This would be a stain on our town. I think it's embarrassing that this article is before us right now. We do not need this, and I hope that the citizens of this town resoundingly defeat this article.
Next. Yes, sir? The green microphone? Yes, sir.
Arthur Holbrook, 57 Edgewood Avenue. I have an experience where I was doing some construction work, and I had a plot plan and a map of an area, and I noticed this garage on a vacant lot, it was just a garage, and in front of it, it had a mailbox. So I talked to the person I was doing the work for, and they said, "Oh, he gets his mail there, and he's still voting." I says, "He's voting in town, in this town, but he doesn't live here. He lives in Agawam." And so I went up to the town hall to the voter registration, and they said there's nothing they could do about it. So anyways, I talked to Senator Lesser's aide about a month ago, two months ago, and he said, "Oh, there's a form you can fill out, and it takes about seven days to straighten it out." Well, of course, this incident happened about two years ago, and I haven't checked now, but I know for quite a while that the person was listed in the voter registration in town, or she lived in Agawam. So I'm for this petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, hit the red mic.
Susan Choquette, 184 Edgewood Ave. I would like to speak out in strong opposition to this article. In December of last year, the ACLU published a fact sheet on voter ID laws, and in it, it states, and I'm going to quote, "Voter ID laws are part of an ongoing strategy to roll back decades of progress on voting rights. Voter ID laws deprive many voters of their right to vote, reduce voter turnout, and stand in direct opposition to our country's trend of including more Americans in the democratic process. These suppressed voters are disproportionately low-income, racial and ethnic minorities, the elderly, and people with disabilities. A recent study that they quote found that since 2000, there have been only 31 credible allegations of voter impersonation, which is the only type of fraud that voter ID laws can prevent during a period where over 1 billion ballots were cast." I'm sure the next person online is going to speak more into this, but our own state Senator Lesser is a co-sponsor of Phil SD 1791, which calls for automatic voter registration of eligible voters as well as same-day voter registration in an effort to make it as easy as possible for people to participate in the democratic process. I urge everyone to please vote no on this article. Thank you.
Michael Clark, 169 Cooley Drive. I'm not going to spend too much time up here because I think everything that needs to be said has already been said. But, you know, earlier this evening, we did speak at length about, you know, about needing to be able to provide more resources to our seniors. This is an issue that will disproportionately affect an older population that may not be able to gain access to a photo ID or may not have the transportation in order to get to a place that can provide them with a photo ID. So I view this as something that should not pass, and I encourage town meeting to vote against it.
Yes, sir.
Kurt Friedman, 24 Ridge. One reason to support this is a claim that it will provide greater accuracy at the polls, and there is a point to be made by that. 20 years ago, almost to the day, I ran for public office in this town, and at the end of the process, I ended losing by one vote. It certainly was, if not the closest, at least one of the closest local elections in the history of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Having said that, though, the overwhelming data shows that having voter ID discourages overall voter turnout, and that would be a bad thing. So despite the fact that I lost by a single vote, I still am strongly opposed to voter ID because overall, it's not in the interests of the community. Thank you. Vote no.
Yes, sir.
Sal Feinstone, 471 Frank Smith Road. I'll be very brief. I spoke about progress. This warrant is not progress. We've been doing very, very well up until this point. Thank you.
Are we ready to come to a vote? All right. This motion requires a simple major, one more speaker. Go ahead.
Arthur Holbrook, 77 Edgewood Avenue. You've probably heard the phrase, where in Chicago, they say, "Vote early, vote often." Well, I guarantee you that I vote quite often in town here, and when I come in and register, I tell them the street and the number, and I can look over like that and say, "Oh, that town didn't vote." So I can come back and change clothes and vote at no time. And then he would have got his extra vote if I was a crook, you know? So just letting you know, you really should have voter ID. And I don't see where, the people don't see that. I mean, you have it on everything else. And thank you.
Thank you. Ready to come to a vote? We shall vote on Article 40, motion under Article 43. This requires a simple majority. Would all those in favor of Article 43, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your blue cards? The motion fails by majority affirmative vote. The motion fails by majority affirmative vote. We shall now come to Article 44. Mr. Nollet.
Jerry Nollet. I hate to be the last man standing again, so I'm going to be very brief. I am the advocate for the bees.
Please make the, please just make the motion right away.
Okay.
Please.
The purpose of the petition is to designate the town--
Sir, sir, you need to move. Say, "I move."
I move.
In terms of the article. Say it in the mic.
I move in terms of the article.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Wow.
Motion has been made and seconded. Now you may speak to it.
Very good. The purpose of this petition is to designate the town of Long Meadow a pollinator-friendly community by recognizing the importance of various pollinator species, including honeybees, and encouraging and supporting the keeping of bees in our community. I'd like to be very brief in quoting a recent article in Denison Magazine by Alison Aubrey. Where have all the bees gone? America's beekeepers are having a rough time. They lost an estimated 42% of their hives last year. An estimated 1 in 3 mouthfuls of foods we eat is dependent on the pollination services by bees and other pollinators. Honeybee pollination adds an estimated $15 billion to the value of crops each year. What's to be done to reverse the plight of the bees? One goal is to give bees more places to forage for nectar and pollen. Earlier this year, a presidential task force released a strategy that calls for restoring or enhancing 7 million acres of pollinator-friendly habitat. The article before you builds on what is being done nationally. The Long Meadow beekeepers want the town to be part of that effort as a pollinator-friendly community. The task force points to multiple stresses, from climate change, boromites, and exposure to pesticides. Several studies that a class of pesticides are among the most widely used in the world are harming bees. A recent study found that bees exposed to these pesticides seem less able to navigate their way back to their hives. You may have heard of colony collapse, although they are excellent navigators. They also found that bees exposed to these pesticides were not laying offspring to the same level as those that were not exposed. A healthy queen will lay 1,500 eggs a day. It's a very busy bee, and I vote, and I please vote yes on Article 44.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Angelidis.
Marie Angelidis, 199 Tanglewood Drive. I support Long Meadow being a pollinator-friendly community and working with the Board of Health and the State of Massachusetts for regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie.
Mr. Gold.
Mark Gold, 129 Avondale Road. I'm really neither for or against the bees, but I, you know, I heard earlier that our Board of Health, and Beverly Hershhorn was up here saying they're trying to develop a plan working with the beekeepers in town. I think, you know, there needs to be some sensibility about, you know, when it imposes on neighbors and things like that. And I'm just concerned about unintended consequences because I haven't looked at this, don't know what it means. And I'd much rather see this voted down and recognized that the Board of Health can get back to where they were before these dueling issues started arising so that we can put together some sensible regulations if those are needed. I will say that tonight, there, about an hour and a half ago, there are 223 people here, and I think they're well polarized on either side of this issue. And I think a common sense thing would be to let our Board of Health take a look more detached at this and come up with the right agreement of what it takes. So I suggest people vote this down and let the Board of Health take over.
We'll let the gentleman at the green microphone first address it, and then you can address it, Mr. Nollet.
I'd like to respond to--
Mr. Nollet.
Mark Lenzac is 45 Whitman Road. This is a point of information for the folks that are still here tonight. The regulations that the beekeepers have crafted are in harmony and in concert with the Massachusetts Best Bee Practices, which are referenced and referred to in the Pollinator Protection Plan that was signed by the governor. So the, again, the regulations, in fact, are more stringent than those that are contained at the state level. So I want to give some people some reassurance in here that what we're doing here is a sensible approach to responsible beekeeping and really harmonizes the needs of the town residents as well as the beekeeper. Thank you.
Mr. Nollet.
Yes, I'd like to build on, exactly on what Mark has just said. I think all of the beekeepers that I know in Long Meadow want a regulation. They want to work, and we are working with the Board of Health to protect only the citizens, the residents of Long Meadow, but to enhance beekeeping so that we can perhaps not push back on the beekeeping, but enhance beekeeping so that we can have more bees and try to manage what we have in accordance with Massachusetts general health law.
Any further discussion on the motion under Article 44? Yes. Go ahead.
Hi, I don't know what microphone, red, blue, yellow, green, but my name is Mary Pat Toyl of 45 Williamsburg Drive. I'm a member of the Board of Health. And in reference to Mr. Gold's comment, which I appreciate, and I appreciate all the input tonight, the Board of Health will continue to work on the regulations that we started. And this vote, you know, in either way, we'll have a regulation, we'll work on it. This doesn't impair or, you know, interfere with the work we'll do going forward. But we did feel strongly, as Beverly said, that this is up to the town in the vote on the bee-friendly community versus if we don't want bees. So it will go forward, and we're still working on it. It's a work in progress. But thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ready to come to a vote? This motion requires a simple majority. Would all those in favor of the motion under Article 44, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. The motion passes by a majority affirmative vote. We need a motion.
I move to dissolve.
Motion to dissolve has been made and seconded. All those in favor of the motion to dissolve town meeting, please raise your blue cards. All those opposed, please raise your blue cards. The motion to dissolve has been approved. The annual town meeting of 2017 is now closed. Thank you and good night. Good job, folks.